You may know the name, and she's the daughter of our very own Carl Drenn. So Cassandra, welcome to council. Thank you. Cassandra, on behalf of the members of council, we are very proud of you this evening. I'm sure you make your family proud as well. So thank you for joining us and embracing us with your indiscernible Canada. Thank you so much. I'd like to call on councillor Thompson to lead us in prayer, please.
May the Lord be with us, our Father, our Son, and our Holy Father, and our Holy Son, our God, our Father, and our Son, our God. Hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come. Thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us, and lead us not in temptation, but deliver us from evil. For thy name is the kingdom, power, and glory, ever and ever. Amen.
This time, members of council, I'm going to ask for a motion to adopt the council minutes of the meeting of August 9th, 2010, moved by councillor Fisher, seconded by councillor Peter Angelo. Any comments or questions? Having seen all those in favor, the motion is carried. Thank you. Move on to any disclosures of a pecuniary interest by members of council. Councillor Fisher.
Thank you. Check number 338988. This is Rose Haven Homes. I have a business venture with them.
Thank you. Councillor Maves.
Yes, check number 338849. That's my source of income, and also under reports, HR 2010-09 regarding the City Group Insurance, and also under reports, 2010-20 as to the insurance portion of that report.
Okay, thank you. So noted. Councillor Peter Angelo.
Thanks, Your Worship. Check 338626 made up to the Niagara Coffee Service School Board, my employer.
Okay. Thank you. Councillor Wayne.
Check number 338514, my husband's employer.
Thank you. And I'd like to disclose that check number 338808, check payable to myself as well.
Councillor Thompson.
Yes, the same conflict declared by councillor Wayne.
I'm sorry, I'm... I missed the intent of...
Same employer, right?
Okay. Okay, thank you. Okay, we'll move on to deputations. If I may, the first deputation this evening is from the Alzheimer Society of Niagara. This evening, we have our chief executive officer of the Alzheimer Society of Niagara, Mrs. Tina Kint, who's joining us, and she's going to make a deputation to inform council about the 15th Annual Coffee Break Campaign. So welcome, Tina.
Thank you. Good evening. We are SLC members of council, city staff, and members of the public. My name is Tina Kint, and I'm the CEO of the Alzheimer Society of Niagara Region and Foundation. I'd like to thank you for this opportunity to speak to you about our 15th Annual Coffee Break. National Coffee Break Day this year is Thursday, September 16th. The idea of a coffee break is to make your coffee count. This concept was inspired by two of our very own councillors during a conference in Scotland where they were introduced to a tea break. As we all know, Canadians love our coffee, and that's where Coffee Break originated. Our vision has evolved into a national fundraiser for Alzheimer studies across Canada that's raised millions of dollars. It's fun, social, and very easy to organize. An Alzheimer Coffee Break is a time when you invite your coworkers, clients, friends, or neighbors to enjoy a cup of coffee or another beverage at a specific time or a break time. Then you simply ask everyone to make a donation. The Alzheimer Society supplies a kit, the host supplies the people. A kit contains a sample of coffee, a donation box, promotional signs, and literature. The Lioness this year are our honorary chair. The Grantham Lioness will be kicking the campaign off for the event at the Lions Hall in St. Catherine's on September 16th from 7:30 to 10:30 a.m. There'll be raffles and more big goods than you can imagine in one place. Last year, they raised over $5,800 towards this campaign. Here in the area, we invite you to stop by and enjoy a coffee and many treats. While many Alzheimer Coffee Breaks in Canada will be held on the national day, you can certainly choose a date that's more convenient to you. It's also not limited to a coffee break. Some of the most successful events in the past have involved doing something a little different. Many businesses have hosted open houses, barbecues, raffles, dress-down days, sold coffee cup decals, and cash register roundups. Our goal this year is a very ambitious $100,000 in the Niagara region. Last year, thanks to close to 300 hosts, we raised $90,000 to support services and programs for individuals affected with Alzheimer disease and dementia. Last year, Mayor SLC hosted a very successful barbecue that raised $1,000. We appreciate that very much. Alzheimer disease is a progressive degenerative brain disease that causes brain cells to shrink or disappear. The cells are replaced by dense spots called lachs and thread-like tangles. These tangles eventually choke healthy brain cells, making simple activities of daily living a challenge. Imagine living alone and seeing your own reflection in a mirror and thinking there is an intruder in your home. That is the reality for someone living with dementia. Currently in Niagara, 29% of people are living alone over the age of 65. Niagara's a retirement community, and it has one of the largest populations of seniors in Canada, and yet we lack the geriatric services compared to other communities. It's estimated that 1 in 11 Canadians over 65 have Alzheimer disease or related dementia. Currently here in Niagara, there's 7,700 people experiencing progressive dementia. In January 2009, the Alzheimer Society of Canada released a new study called Rising Tide: The Impact of Dementia on Canadian Society. This data revealed some powerful statistics. Currently, there is a half a million Canadians living with dementia, and within this generation, that will increase to 1 million people across the country. That means someone in Canada will develop dementia every two minutes, which is up from every five minutes currently. The economic burden of dementia doubles every decade, which equates to a startling $153 billion in 2038. That's up from the $15 billion calculated 2008. While most people consider dementia to be a disease that affects only the elderly, we have learned that currently 70,000 Canadians living with dementia are under the age of 65. We also have learned that women represent 72% of all people with Alzheimer disease or related dementias. So what does that mean for you and I? It means that we need to consider changing the odds. There are many things that we should consider doing now to lower these numbers and our own risk of dementia. We all need to be very good to our brains. We need to exercise, eat properly, and reduce our stress. By just socializing and laughing, you can actually decrease your brain health, or increase your brain health, and make new connections and reduce your stress. The Alzheimer Society is very proud of the difference it's making. We're helping individuals stay in their homes an average of a year and a half longer, which is reducing the burden of acute care services. Over the past year, we have increased our public education in an effort to reduce the incidence of dementia, as well as support our families through these journeys. We provide assessments, counseling, coping strategies, behavior interventions, and information regarding accessible resources. This is further accomplished through a lending library, assistive device program, support groups, workshops, and programs offered through our therapeutic living center and the caregiver cafe. Each year, the society must raise approximately 35% of a $1.8 million budget. Coffee Break is our signature event. It's simple and easy to organize, and the money stays right here in Niagara. I encourage all of you to host your own Coffee Break. Every Coffee Break makes a difference, big or small, and it always amazes me how collectively coffee money adds up. With your assistance, we can help today and provide hope for tomorrow. Anyone can register for a Coffee Break kit by simply calling the Alzheimer Society at 905-687-3914, or visit our website, alzheimerniagara.ca. I thank you for your time in this worthwhile endeavor, and I have Mary, your kit.
Thank you very much, Tina. And just before that, I'd like to thank you for joining us again this evening to make us aware of the campaign again this year. I'd be pleased again to host the campaign, and we're talking about the event taking place here at City Hall on Friday, September 17th between 2:00 to 4:00, Committee Room One. I'm inviting all members of council to join with us for this year's Coffee Break, so hopefully they'll be part of that, and we'd be pleased to make our donations again to assist Alzheimer awareness and to support your cause. Are there any questions from members of council of Ms. Kint? Yes, 2:00 to 4:00, 2:00 o'clock, actually. It's a staggered time for different departments, but 2:00, it'll start Committee Room One on the second floor of City Hall.
Excellent.
And any questions to Tina? Then I'll take the kit, and thank you so much, Tina. Members of council, our next deputation is a visit from the new publisher of the Niagara Falls Review, Mr. Mark Kressman, and Steve Gallagher of the new managing editor of the Niagara Falls Review would like to formally introduce themselves to the council and give a brief update on the paper to our council. So gentlemen, welcome, and it's nice to see you here in our chambers. So we do have a familiar face, of course, in one of your reporters, that Cory is often here, appear here every meeting, of course, but we appreciate the fact that you're here with us as well. So I'll turn the microphone over to you.
Thank you very much. Good evening, Your Worship, members of council and city staff. I've had the opportunity to meet with a number of you already. However, for those of you I've not met, I'd like to introduce myself. My name is Mark Kressman. I'm the new publisher of the Niagara Falls Review. With me today, I have Steve, our new managing editor, and they're hiding back there. I have Daria, a new director of advertising, and a slightly older Joe Wallace, our city editor, and Cory LaRocque, who I think most of you are familiar with. Just a quick background on myself. I was born, raised, and have lived my entire life in Niagara Falls, which makes me the first publisher since the Leslie family to be a Falls native, which I'm very proud of. I've been in the newspaper and media management for my entire working career, which is about 30 years, and I consider this an absolute dream position. Niagara Falls is the only place I've called home, the only place I ever want to call home. I've grown up here, and I understand the pulse of this community. The Niagara Falls Review has been the pulse of this community for the last 130 years, and we expect it to continue over the next 130 years. Although our business continues to change, we at the Review have embraced this change by coming up with a new and stronger online and print product that we feel continues to get better and better. Our editorial, sales, and distribution admin teams are local, passionate, hardworking, and progressive thinkers. As many of you know, our building is for sale. This doesn't mean we're closing up shop, nor does it mean we're becoming a regional newspaper. Our building is for sale because it no longer suits the needs of our newspaper. Our commitment continues to be Niagara Falls, and we are currently looking for a new building within the city. As we navigate through these new times, I encourage you to give us a call, send us an email or Facebook message, or stop by the office. We'd love to hear from you. We want to know your thoughts, ideas, and your vision for where you'd like to see us go moving forward. Every day on page 2 of our newspaper, you can find our phone numbers, email addresses, so please feel free to use them. Finally, I encourage all nonprofit, charity groups, sports and arts organizations to give us a call. We want to be involved in any way we can. Steve is now going to give us a quick update on where editorial is going and introduce himself. Thank you, Mark.
First off, thank you for the opportunity to address you. I, like Mark, was raised in Niagara. However, it was St. Catherine's. So please don't hold that against you to start. I've worked in the newspaper industry for more than 15 years in a variety of locations, including Alberta and throughout Ontario. I know this area very well and the issues surrounding the region, having worked the past six years at the Standard in St. Catherine's as news editor. One of the best parts about joining the Review and made it a very, very easy decision for me is the opportunity to work with a group of talented, dedicated, and experienced reporters and editors. It would make my job a lot easier, working with such a solid team. Our staff cares passionately about Niagara Falls and is committed to delivering local news that matters to our readers, both in print and online. And just to maybe talk about something new, Mark had asked me to discuss some new things coming. Maybe you read it in the paper, we're launching a new community editorial board this fall. We're looking for people, 10 people, with a range of opinions to meet once a month with the Review and to also write a regular column on our comment page. I've actually received several applicants already, applications already. This community has a ton of spirit, and I assume I'm going to be receiving more applications, and I look forward to receiving more. Finally, we're looking to continue to boost our presence online, including through our Facebook fan page, where we have more than 2,000 fans, sorry. So please join us on Facebook if you haven't already.
Great. Are there any questions of Mark or Steve? Councillor Thompson?
Just a comment. I thought maybe when I saw your name on the agenda that you'd be coming tonight rather than Cory LaRocque. Unfortunately, that's not...
It's hard to replace him.
Yes, we know that. But gentlemen, proud of you.
Anyway, this is actually historic time. I've been around here for the last almost 40 years in and out, and I have never seen the publisher or the managing editor at a council meeting to introduce themselves. So my compliments to you and being here tonight, because I think that is extremely important that the city council, the city itself, and the newspaper certainly should be hand-in-hand in everything we do. And I was also impressed with the fact that you're from Niagara Falls originally, but sitting at one of the local meetings that I attend with the Winter Festival of Lights. It was nice to see you, that you're not only the publisher, but you're willing to be part of the committees in the community and partake of that. That's unique and unusual. Congratulations.
Thank you. I too would like to echo the sentiments of councillor Thompson. You should be aware, members of council, that Mark has agreed to sit on the Mayor's Homelessness Task Force. We're looking at homelessness, and his predecessor was involved, and Mark too has taken the challenge to assist us in that committee. So we do thank you for your involvement, and certainly I've had the opportunity to speak with both you and Steve and others in your advertising department. Of course, we know Joe Wallace very well, so we're really pleased that you've come tonight with your administrative staff, in the sense that you have your department heads with you. It certainly is refreshing, and it's something that we relish, and the fact that we have this interaction with the paper, it's a very important lifeline between us and the members of our community. So we hope that that relationship will grow and continue to grow, and you're passing on the information as you do and continue to do so. So thank you for joining us.
Thank you.
Any other members of council wish to make comment? Well, thank you once again, gentlemen. Nice to have you here.
Thank you very much.
If you can bear the rest of the meeting, I'll welcome you to stay. That's a true test. Mr. Clerk, would you introduce the next item on the agenda, please?
A public meeting is now being convened to consider a proposed amendment to the city zoning bylaw to permit a Deerfield Estates Phase 9 draft plan of subdivision. Notice was given by first-class mail in accordance with the Planning Act on Friday, August 6th, 2010, and by posting a sign on the property in question. Anyone who wants notice of the passage of the zoning bylaw amendment to participate in any site plan process if applicable, or preserve their opportunity to appeal to the Ontario Municipal Board, shall leave their name on the sign in sheets outside the council chamber.
Thank you very much, Mr. Clerk. At this time, I'm going to ask the director of planning to explain the purpose and the reason for the proposed bylaw amendment, Mr. Hurlavich.
Thank you, Worship. This application involves a rezoning application of some vacant land on the east or west side of Kayla Road, south of Lundys Lane, and it involves a plan of subdivision for those lands. Location of the lands, on the west side of Kayla Road, south of Lundys Lane, as I mentioned, north of the New Forest View Boulevard, the property has an area of 16.4 hectares, approximately 40.5 acres of land. To the north are some vacant lands, commercial lands, which have frontage on Lundys Lane. To the east of the property are single detached dwellings. To the south are a number of single detached dwellings, which are just developing, as well as a vacant lot, and there's an apartment building to the south of these lands as well. The plan is to divide the approximately 40 acres into 207 lots for single detached dwellings. There are four blocks for multiple-family housing. Two of the blocks would be for townhouse development, and two of the blocks would be for apartment development. Altogether, there would be approximately 145 to 199 multiple-family units. Most of this, we've covered already, that the applicant is looking to subdivide the land. The application was previously at council on July 19th. It was deferred by council in order for staff to meet with the applicant, to explore some alternatives to develop the property by moving the apartment buildings away from Kayla Road, and to also investigate council's interest in perhaps altering the road widening so that rather than coming primarily from the east side, that perhaps more of it could come from the west side. Staff in meeting with the developer explored four possible alternatives to the layout. One, we looked at moving the apartment blocks further into the subdivision, replacing the development next to Kayla Road without the townhouses or single detached dwellings. The apartment blocks would be on the east-west road, Street A. There was an advantage, of course, that there would be lower building heights along Kayla Road opposite the current single detached dwellings, primarily one-story in height. The disadvantage was that we found that by putting the lower density next to Kayla Road, we ended up with an undesirable reverse lot frontage situation where there'd be a fence between those developments and the city boulevard, which results in a no-man's land. It would also place the longest side of the apartment building next to single detached dwellings within the plan of subdivision itself. We then looked at another alternative, which was to move the apartment blocks further into the subdivision, but to allow for townhouses or single detached dwellings to front onto Kayla Road, getting rid of that reverse lot frontage problem. But what we found was that we'd have a number of driveways then entering onto Kayla Road. And I think council heard at the last meeting in July that some people were having issues already with trying to get onto Kayla Road, and that's before it's widened. So again, there was an advantage, there would be lower buildings next to Kayla Road, but the disadvantage was that it would introduce additional driveways onto an arterial road, which we felt would be undesirable and unsafe. So we looked at a third alternative, which was to leave the apartment buildings on Kayla Road, but to turn them so that they would actually face into the new street, Street A. Didn't actually find any advantages to that. We found a major disadvantage, which was that the longest side of the building would then be facing Kayla Road or be parallel to Kayla Road, which would then form a larger barrier for the houses on the east side of Kayla Road. We saw that as undesirable. As well, we looked at possibly, and this was one of the alternatives suggested by one of the area residents, was reducing the apartment building heights to three stories. Again, this had the advantage of providing a lower built form next to Kayla Road opposite the single detached dwellings via a built form that would be familiar to the residents in the area, because it would be similar to Bethlehem Place, the new apartment building on the west side of Kayla Road. The disadvantage was that in order to meet the required density targets that are required by the region, that we would require larger building footprints. It would also likely result in smaller unit sizes within the project, and that this would affect the type of project that would actually develop on the blocks. So what we found is basically that the three alternatives listed, firstly that I went through, would have negative impacts for a number of reasons, and that the original proposal by the developer, which was to have the apartment buildings front onto Kayla Road, actually had more advantages and disadvantages. We again felt the apartment buildings would have direct access to an arterial road. Our official plan encourages convenient access to an arterial road, and that there wouldn't be any need to travel along local streets. We also found that the apartment buildings would be within walking distance of existing and planned commercial facilities, again, areas that our official plan encourages multi-family. We also found that there would be inadequate distance separation from the dwellings to the east, from the east side of Kayla Road, since Kayla Road is intended to function as a four-lane arterial road, would have a width of 30 meters. As well, the orientation of the buildings would be in the east-west direction, that is, the narrow side would be facing towards Kayla Road, and therefore the dwellings on Kayla Road, and that there would be more views between the buildings, and therefore sky views provided. In discussing that option with the developer and trying to reach some sort of a compromise, expressing council's concern that we look at the options, the developer then proposed that he would increase the front yard setback for the proposed apartment buildings, and rather than the standard 7.5-meter setback, it would have a 15-meter setback from Kayla Road. This would provide a further and greater separation from the dwellings on the east side of Kayla Road, would result in a distance separation of 45 meters, approximately 150 feet, between the apartment buildings and the front lot lines of the dwellings on Kayla Road. This provides a length-to-height ratio of 2 to 1, whereas on Lundys Lane, where we encourage additional height, it's actually a 1 to 1 ratio, so significantly greater distance. As well, we found that a berm could be provided along the front yard, which would help assist screening the new development from Kayla Road. The amending bylaw would include a minimum requirement for a landscape strip of 7.5 meters, or at least at staff's recommendation. And although not one of the options is listed above, reducing the height of three stories could be acceptable if the density could be achieved. We would need to maintain a minimum density of 66 units per hectare. By comparison, Bethlehem Place was developed at 72 units per hectare. The council determines that the building height should be three stories. We were recommending that the standard front yard setback of 7.5 meters then be provided, which would give the developer a bit more flexibility. We looked at road widens, because that was something that was expressed to this council as being a concern. The current pavement is offset within the city's road allowance, and therefore, based on the environmental assessments that have gone on to the north and to the south of these lands, the EAs have identified a wider widening on the east side of the street. lands, the EAs have identified a wider widening on the east side of the street. The ultimate width of that road allowance is 30 meters. This would provide for four lanes for traffic, would also provide for bicycle lanes. The width of the right-of-way has to be increased by approximately 10 meters to accommodate those additional lanes. To date, the road widens have been dedicated on both sides. South of the lands, 3-meter widening has been dedicated on the west side of the street, between McCloud Road and the current registered plans of subdivision, and a 3-meter widening is proposed along this portion of the subdivision, which would then maintain that alignment. There is a portion, then, between the plans of subdivision and Catalina, basically between Catalina Drive down to Forest View, that hasn't been subject to environmental assessment. That would have to occur as part of the environmental assessment process, and the public would be notified of that. Previously, when we had presented this to council, stormwater management as well was an issue at the neighborhood meetings. The westerly portion of this subdivision, approximately 84 detached lots, are within the Beaver Dam's watershed area. Stormwater from this can be accommodated within the Edward Estates Plan of Subdivision, stormwater pond that already is in existence on Garner Road. The previous report noted that the stormwater should limit that. What we've identified now through additional work is that the balance of the lots within the Warren Peak watershed, lots 59 to 131, and 156 to 161, should be subject to a holding symbol, which would hold those lots until such a time as the stormwater servicing upgrades south of McCloud Road were to occur. So, staff, having looked at the possible alternatives, has come back with the recommendation to support the requested zoning amendment and draft plan of subdivision. We do feel that it does comply with the provincial regional policies respecting greenfield development, that it complies with our official plan, that increasing the minimum distance separation for the apartment blocks does provide a greater separation between the existing dwellings and the proposed multiple-family units, and the plan of subdivision does represent a logical extension of the previous subdivision design to the south. Therefore, the recommendation is that the Deerfield Estates Plan 9 be draft approved such that the conditions attached to the appendix, if the mayor or is designated, be authorized to sign the draft approval within 20 days after the notice of council's decision has been given, provided that no appeals have been lodged. The draft approval would be given for a period of three years. The revised application of the zoning, which would include the additional setback from Kayla Road and the H symbol, also be encoded. There's a block of land that would require a record of site condition, and there would be a holding symbol for that as well, and that the mayor and clerk be authorized to execute the subdivision agreement document at the appropriate time. Those are the highlights of the report. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Hurlovich. And once again, members of the public are advised that failure to make an oral or written submission at this public meeting will result in, you know, chair and municipal were dismissing any referral that it receives. Failure to sign the sign-in sheet will result in staff rejecting an appeal as per Section 34, subsection 19 of the Planning Act. At this time, council will hear from anyone other than the applicant who wishes to speak to the proposed zoning bylaw amendment. I'd like you to come forward to state your name and address for the record, please, and please note there's a 10-minute limit. So, anyone other than the applicant wishing to speak, able to come forward, please.
Good evening. Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council and city staff, my name is Deb O'Connor. I'm sure you've heard it before, and I reside at 6050 Kayla Road. Before I start my presentation, I'd just like to pass a handout to council of the presentation and some photographs of our section.
Could I ask you just to speak a little louder, please?
Okay. I appear before you tonight, again, somewhat nervously, and after reading Mr. Mir Torrey's letter, I had two reactions. First off, it was so good, I wanted to apologize to him for even questioning the plan and beg forgiveness. Then, as I thought more and wondered how we could challenge all the money and expertise River Realty engages, it struck me. The big difference we have here is that one party is all about money and making more of it, and do their development, and move on to the next plan. The other party, us, are about preserving our lifestyle, hard work, and well-established homes. There is no moving on to a new site. This is our home, our neighborhood, and for most of us, we have invested all we have in our houses and properties. I feel a little like David versus Goliath. You can guess which party is which. Then I remembered, things didn't turn out so bad for David. Of course, we are not opposed to some help from each council. I will try to respond to matters raised in both River Realty's submission and the planning report. First, we do appreciate River Realty's offering to create an additional setback, as well as their offer to sell to the city an additional five feet of their property to help lessen the impact of the road widening. We are extremely unhappy with city staff, we are extremely unhappy city staff would not consider this, and it leads us to believe that city staff has little or no concern for preserving the mature trees in this section of Kayla Road. In my earlier email, I provided you with city policy statements and bylaws that state the intention that every effort should be made to save trees, and yet here we have the city not even considering this offer, and how it might help save the trees. This reaction from city staff, as well as they have left the most completed landscaped residences to last for an environmental assessment, leads us to believe that city staff are not very concerned about the loss of streetscape and mature trees, contrary to several city policies and statements. In fact, no consideration for the existing streetscape appears to have been considered in the initial planning. If five more feet or a little more aids in saving the trees and streetscape, then River Realty's offer should be pursued. There are many streets in the region that are not 100% straight, and a slight curve here is certainly achievable and acceptable. It has also occurred on other arterial roads that are a little narrower than what is proposed here and still operate well. Gradation. We still contend gradation can occur with a different design and still maintain density. No consideration has been given by River Realty or the planning department in their review, needing to consider zoning for a higher-density site, but located adjacent to River Realty's commercial property on Kayla Road and Lundys Lane, or next to existing commercial on Lundys Lane in the interior of the plan, which could provide superior access to both commercial and public transit, as supported by the official plan and stated in Mr. Mir Torrey's letter. The assumption that this can be the only location and satisfy the official plan is false. Certainly more work and design change needs to occur, but it can be done. If we had been allowed to attend the meeting with city staff and River Realty, maybe some of these matters could have been put on the table. It is apparent from the planning report, they only looked at the present plan and made comments, but did not consider other alternatives, which may have satisfied all parties. Consideration for road access and a pedestrian sidewalk directly onto Lundys Lane would be considered by some to be a more superior plan than what is put forth. Of course, like on Kayla Road, we realize some property purchase would be required, but still achievable. It is important to make a distinction that new purchasers will know what they are buying into, as opposed to existing residents, as referred to in Mr. Mir Torrey's letter. Additionally, we would add, it is not the intent of the official plan to severely alter mature existing neighborhoods. People seem to want to look at this plan in isolation and use policies to support their position. They cited as an official plan requirement to locate the higher density on the fringe or periphery of the development. While it is not on the edge to us, in fact, it falls right in the middle of mature, single-family homes, if you just open your eyes to include a couple of more streets. Examples exist throughout the region where apartment buildings do not have access to an arterial road, and the system still works. Why is this a site that can only access an arterial road? In fact, it is proposed that some of the higher-density traffic will be on an interior road. I would like to comment on Perdim Transportation Letter, which did not review or comment on the benefit and desirability of having access to Lundys Lane as an alternative. However, their letter does stress and point out that walking distance to shopping and public transit for the apartment occupants is desirable. Well, superior options may exist, but nobody is looking at them. Perdim is only commenting on one design put in front of them and is paid by River Realty to not look for alternatives, but to provide evidence to support what has been put forward. Maybe if the instruction was to look at all alternatives, their comments may have been different. We are hopeful that council, staff, and River Realty would strive for the best plan for all, but unless there is more willingness to do so, it will probably not happen, which is regrettable. We do understand that there is enough rationale to support the plan as is, even if it is not the best plan. Should it not be possible for the apartment relocation, then we would request council support to try and lessen the impact of the development and to try and retain the trees, streetscape, and neighborhood we have. We think this can thus be done by ensuring the following: Any road design or plan in this section of Kayla Road needs to protect existing mature trees. There are several ways to achieve this. We are hopeful staff can report back in a week on this and have it as part of this approved plan, or as a separate motion that makes it clear this will happen. For example, reduce road widening, take land from the other side to lessen impact, curb the road design, last resort, build sidewalks around the trees. Additionally, we would request, as part of the approval of this plan of subdivision, that a mature buffer, berm, and tree be created and planted along the new development on Kayla Road. We prefer not to leave this to the site plan agreement only, and then find ourselves fighting the same battle. Lastly, we do request that we be involved in the review process of the site plan. Again, we thank council for their consideration in advance, and hope you can support our request.
Thank you, Ms. O'Connor. I think we have a few questions from members of council. Counselor Thompson.
Yes. I, first of all, want to compliment you and your people on the presentation, and the work, and the emails that have gone back and forth with respect to this matter, and also my compliments to River Realty. I think there has been a genuine effort to try to work, and I think if you had have been sitting in the same room, we might have been sitting here with something that you were able to accept, and there would be a suitable compromise. I couldn't believe, when I was reading the reports, that River Realty was willing to give an additional five feet on the other side of the road, which hopefully would have saved the trees, and further removed the project another 15 meters back, which I thought was a great compromise at the time, and the suggestion that the staff rejected that because of the alignment of the road. But we're always, and you're going to find this, in fact, if you drive up and down Kayla Road with the new paving there now anyway, it's certainly turning into a speedway, and with the four lanes up the top, that's certainly going to be the case. And we're always trying to determine how we can slow the traffic down, and here's a perfect situation for a curb and traffic calming, to attempt to try to accomplish that. And I thought that it was a great suggestion and compromise by River Realty, and I think that you would agree.
I do agree.
It would save the trees, give it actually a nice curb in the road to calm and slow the traffic down. So I think that's one suggestion that is excellent. The other suggestions with respect to the height of the building, I don't know whether three stories is sufficient to make the project viable and satisfy the requirements of the planning department with respect to the number of apartments there, but I'm thinking there are some compromises there that can lessen the impact. I like the berming and the landscaping situation. There could be even a stepping-back situation, which we did with one apartment that was six stories on Dunn Street, and they stepped it back, so the impact even at the front was even lessened. And I wondered if there was even any architectural features that could be utilized, such as a mantled roof or whatever, to make it look more like a residential, fit into that residential area. So, are these things that would satisfy your...
I like those suggestions. Yes, I do. I like those suggestions. I mean, it sounds like it could be more complimentary to our side of the road.
Yeah.
And although I didn't put in my presentation about a height restriction of three stories, that was addressed at the last council, and if there is no relocation for the apartments, that would be one of the requests, is to have a height restriction.
And the architectural features and also stepping back could also be things that mitigate some of the concerns that you have.
Yeah.
Well, my compliments to you, and I think we're probably not far away, and I compliment River Realty for their flexibility with respect to this. I think...
I do, too. That was a surprise to us, to know that they had offered...
Tried to work on the system. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Anoni.
Thank you. Ms. O'Connor, I had the same feeling you did when I read Mr. Mir Torrey's letter, because I was trying to find a planning position to oppose this, and there is no planning position to oppose this. And I also thought it was remarkable that River Realty would look at your concern in regards to your mature trees and losing that portion of your property, and move it over. And I guess I share your unhappiness with the fact that our staff didn't even bring that request forward to council, or that option forward to council. And I have to say, I thought Counselor Thompson's remarks were right on the mark, because there is really no planning standpoint to turn this down, so looking for your compromise and River Realty's compromise is the only one that we can really hope for.
Okay. I appreciate it.
Are there any other questions of Ms. O'Connor? Ms. O'Connor, your report is excellent, well-prepared, so thank you very much, and we'll just see how we fare from here at this point. So, is there anyone other than the applicant who wishes to address council? Anyone else other than the applicant who wishes to address council? Let's begin for the third time. Okay, at this time, I'd like to call on River Realty or their representative. Is Mr. Mir Torrey going to be present to make the presentation? Welcome, sir.
Your worship, members of council, just a comment. While in some understandable way, the issue of the trees has become part of our application, it's pretty obvious that there's nothing about our application that impacts on the trees. The removal of the trees really has to do with the widening of Kayla Road. It isn't anything that River Realty is proposing here with this plan of subdivision that has one iota of impact on the trees. Having said that, I mean, we came to the meeting with a really honest view. We were here for over two hours. There were three members of city's planning staff, engineering, two members of the engineering staff. We had our own planner, and believe me, we did go through that plan and tried to do things with it. I mean, Mr. Hurlovich said the night before, he had cut out the pieces and he tried to move them around the plan to see what you could do with it. Essentially, from a planner's point of view, while you can hear what... Essentially, from a planner's point of view, while you can hear what the local residents are saying, Section 5124 of the Planning Act, when dealing with a plan of subdivision, mandates certain criteria that you look at, and one of them is simply not just the welfare of the existing residents, but also the welfare of the residents who will be living in that plan of subdivision. We propose the setback, because the setback achieves approximately 175 feet of building-to-building separation between the existing single-family residences and the apartments. That's 2.5 to 1 ratio, which is, by planning standards, more than acceptable. If you try to move those apartment buildings anywhere inside the plan of subdivision, you're moving those apartment buildings not only flat side against single-family residences, but you're moving them within 60 feet of those residences. Is that looking after the welfare of the future residents of this plan of subdivision? I would submit to you that it is not. So from the point of view of location of these apartment buildings, quite frankly, not only the mandate of the official plan, but even if you leave the language of the official plan out of this completely, and you try using good planning principles to change it, keeping in mind that provincial policy mandates on a greenfield development that we achieve certain densities, you just can't do it. And as I said, we spent two and a half hours trying to do it. And quite frankly, we came to the meeting trying to find a solution. Now, on the three, on the additional five feet widening, it was explained to us, we had the whole map stretching out of the whole layout of Kaler Road, and quite frankly, I was convinced, maybe you won't be convinced, that while our offer was made in good faith, there were good engineering reasons why it wouldn't be very feasible. Now, that's a decision this council has to make. We can't make it. The offer is still on the table, but there are environmental assessments that have been done. There's the alignment, not only of this roadway, but how it joins the intersection of Kaler Road north of Lundys Lane, you have to take into consideration, where the environmental assessment has already been done on the north side of Kaler Road. So we were given a whole bunch of reasons. They didn't want our land, that's fine, but I think it's unfair to point the finger to staff and say it was ignored. Believe me, it was not ignored in any way. Having said so, however, there are certain alternatives that have been proposed that I would like to address. One of them is this issue of height, and quite frankly, I come to this council knowing that this council has had a lot of experience dealing with the impact of height. If you asked me, in all honesty, if I lived across the road and you said to me, would you rather see a shorter building but a fatter one? Because that's what you're doing. You're taking that rubber ball and you're squeezing it. What happens when you squeeze it? It spreads out this way. Well, you can't see over a three-story building and you can't see over a six-story building, but I'll tell you that if I'm across the street, I'd much rather have a narrow building than a fat building, quite frankly, because the wall gets bigger in front of you. You want as narrow a wall as you can possibly have. In addition to that, if you increase, quite frankly, it hasn't been mentioned tonight, but if you increase the coverage to 40%, well, your bylaw says you have 40% of landscaping. So you take 40% of coverage, 40% of landscaping, where do we put the parking? We have 20% to put all the parking for this building, and I don't think it'll fit. I just don't think it will fit. So I mean, that's another issue that doesn't seem to be addressed. If you, the idea of moving the building back 50 feet wasn't to then take 7.5 meters or 25 feet and put landscaping on it, because then all of a sudden you've removed guest parking from the area. All you've got between the building and the landscaping is a driveway. That's all you have. That means all the parking goes to the back. It goes all up against those single-family residences that are there. That's not looking after the welfare of the future residents of this plan of subdivision, quite frankly. I really don't think it is. I mean, so we looked at all these things, and I'm here to tell you that we tried our best, and we made the offer. We made the offer of the 50-foot setback, and we made the offer of the additional five feet, which would take 15 feet off our side of Kaler Road. I am as convinced tonight as I was at the end of the meeting that this is the best plan. This is by far the, not only does it conform with all planning requirements, it is the best plan. Glad to answer any questions you want.
Thank you. Any questions of Mr. Miratore? Counselor Thompson.
Yeah, tell me your feeling about the trees and the road widening. I know it's not your responsibility, but what did you say about that the offer is still on the table?
The offer is still on the table to sell the additional five feet, yes. I mean, we were told that it wouldn't do anything, but the offer is still on the table. We've not withdrawn that offer.
Okay. Well, you look at these pictures and you see the trees, the mature trees in front. We're supposed to be environmentally conscious about what's going on. That would really destroy that whole landscape section of the other side and maybe through, you know, to the engineer. Why is this something that is not feasible and possible?
Mr. Holman.
Mr. Mayor, quite honestly, the city is not determined that there's a need for cutting of the trees or the road widening as a result of this application. That has to go through environmental assessment process. The EA process includes things like environmental impacts, social impacts, property impacts. That's a separate process that's independent of this, and we've yet to do that. And it may very well be that the comments raised by Ms. O'Connor this evening will dictate how the final design would be incorporated and approved.
Well, come, that doesn't give me a lot of confidence if it's going to be done after about what's going to happen. Is there any guarantee that you can give to these people that these trees are going to be, or can we, is there some reason? What's the difference? Is there a cost to the municipality with respect to the acquisition of that additional five feet?
If it's determined through the EA process that additional property is required, the municipality will have to acquire that land, and that will be funded from development charges, and that road section would be upgraded as a result of the development in that area, not necessarily this phase of the project, but as part of the development in that entire Garner neighborhood.
So just as a precaution and a protection of the motion tonight is that we acquire the five feet and get on with the environmental assessment and whatever else has to be done? Is that a problem?
This is a budget item that we'll have to take into consideration. If you'd like a report, come back to council on this matter. We could explain the detail and the process and what the estimate of cost would be. But we have to be careful not to predict what the environmental assessment is going to tell us. We're going to have to have consideration for things like bike lanes and sidewalks and utilities, all of that, those issues. We don't have enough information to say we need five feet or eight feet or 10 feet. My preference, quite honestly, is to deal with the EA issues as part of the EA process. There's an appeal period, appeal process, there's an opportunity for public input, and the issues that are raised here can be vetted properly through that process.
But the council is involved in the adjudication of that effort, and there's no protection for the people with respect to the trees at the end of that process, right?
Well, ultimately, the EA process, we bring the recommendation back here to council. If they're not comfortable with the recommendation, we go back and look at other options. And, you know, we have, as I say, the public has the opportunity to request a Part II order and ask the minister to look at other options.
I think we're so close with this situation, and I think both parties have given and taken, and I think I'd like to see a little more dialogue take place with respect to this.
Mr. Miratore.
Yes, I, just to pick up with Mr. Thompson's and the response you got from the engineer. We were very fortunate. At the meeting, we had a very narrow aerial photograph of the right-of-way that literally went from one end of committee room, table one, to the other end. So we were actually able to look down and see the properties in question. We could see the line where the current ownership of the municipality was that had already been taken, and we could see the line where the proposed roadway was going to be. So there are two things that became very distinctive here. There is the road where the, there was a line where the roadway was going to be, but it didn't necessarily mean that it took all of the width of the lands that are already taken by the municipality in these front yards. So you could see trees that were going to remain there. They were on the right-of-way, in other words, the road right-of-way, but they weren't going to be taken by the thing. So quite frankly, it would have been useful to see that here today, so you people could have seen it, but it was pretty clear that not all of these 24 trees are going to be cut down, even if you build the roadway in this location. It was pretty well very evident from that. So that, I just wanted to be fair to everybody, that there is the process that the engineer is talking about. It will be an environmental assessment, and it will be a report that comes back to council on that basis. Just so you know.
Any members of council, further questions? Yes, Counselor Diodati.
Yes, Your Worship, I'm trying to understand here, the five, is it five feet or five meters? Was it five feet that we're...
Five feet. Well, 10 feet are already being taken.
Right.
So this is an additional...
Okay.
Five feet, so for a total of 15.
Okay. My question to You, Worship, is, and I understand exactly what Mr. Miratore is saying, if we decide to pursue the road of the five feet extra purchasing, what's the process? When does that happen? How does that impact the current development? Does it hold it up in any way? Maybe we could be taken through that process just a little bit so we can understand.
Mr. Cao or Mr. Holman would like to answer the question.
Mr. Mayor, I think the process would be, once we determine that we need to do environmental assessment on this section of the roadway, we'd include it in a capital budget. We'd have a public meeting to talk about what the impacts are going to be. We'd look at the technical elements of the project, what kind of traffic volumes we are projecting over the future, things like sidewalks, bike lanes, utility relocations, that type of thing, and how much property would be required to accommodate those components. We'd look at some of the environmental features, like the street trees, the ages of them, what would happen, and how close could we excavate to them before they would be threatened. So we'd be doing things like arborist reports and that type of investigation to determine whether or not they would survive. We'd also look at different designs to try and mitigate the impacts. Let's come up with a design that didn't require any property. Where would the concessions have to be made? And they would be all evaluated, and based on their merits, we would select a preferred alternative and cost it out. That would have to be presented again to the public, and then the process would be to include the capital costs into a future capital budget with particular regard to financing, and then we would call a capital project. That process would probably take between three and five years.
Okay. Yes, Mr. Miratore.
Just to add to that, that obviously, we can't wait for that process to start and finish. That's going to take quite literally eight or nine or 10 months. So if we're going to follow that process, then you have to take into consideration that you're going to be taking some of that setback, additional setback, that we have offered. And quite frankly, I'm not sure that that's, is, the only thing that might do is you may save a few trees. It won't change impacts at all, because we reduced the setback. So if that's how you're going to go, then we have to take into consideration how the design of the subdivision goes forward. With a setback of 50 feet at the apartment buildings, that's not a big problem, because then you're left with a 45-foot setback. I can't tell you, though, I can't give you the same answer with respect to the townhouse project to the south of the two buildings, because I don't know how that additional five feet is going to impact that area. The two buildings, you know, it goes from, we've already said, we'll go back 50 feet, so whether the setback goes from 50 feet to 45 feet, I don't think will matter that much to my client, but I can't give you that answer with respect to the townhouse project. I don't know if you can. I don't think so. I mean, this is not, you can't design the development standing at this podium. It's really not the right thing to do.
Certainly. Appreciate your comment, too. Are there any further questions, members of council, or are those persons present with respect to the proposed application? Yes, Counselor Diodati.
Yes, Your Worship, and I just wanted to know, was there a grants from the opponent? It was suggested in the letter from the O'Conners that perhaps mature trees could be part of the site plan process, you know, to help kind of buffer the, and a berm to help buffer the apartment building. And I'm just, you know, and again, I know that's a site plan process.
It's a site plan process. There is a limit to the size of trees you can do as planting, I mean, as far as age and size, relatively speaking, particularly if you're putting them on a berm, because your root system is elevated, so you have got those limitations. You know, again, you're asking me something to design something. First of all, it's outside of my expertise. I'm not a landscape architect, and secondly, I'm very reluctant to do this from the podium without having...
All I would ask to You, Your Worship, is that is there some flexibility and is there some, because, you know, obviously, it's a give and take, you know, and we appreciate both sides. And I just, I think you're, as Counselor Thompson said, I don't think you're that far apart. And I mean, if it meant speding in some more mature trees as opposed to saplings, I just want to make sure that there's some goodwill on your side that you would do something for this.
Again, I think you would have to say to me, is there going to be a berm or not a berm? Because if it's a berm, I think there is a planting issue, nothing to do with the size of the trees. I think you have a physical issue of putting mature trees on a berm, unless you're talking about a berm that's 40, 50 feet wide, then you have that issue. So, you know, I don't think there's an issue. I don't, I think I'd rather have the trees than the berm, quite frankly. If, again, if I were on the other side, I think that makes more sense. Berms tend to take up a lot of room on a footprint basis that really don't add that much to a landscaping scene. They're usually done for visibility, and when your visibility is a six-story building, then what do you gain from it? You really don't gain very much from the berm. I think you gain more from a good planting string, in my opinion.
So, Your Worship, just so we're clear, so you're, then you, the proposal has enough flexibility that we could propose some mature trees?
I think so.
Okay. Think so? Okay.
Yes. Mr. Cao, would you just make a comment?
Mr. Mayor, if I could, and I think Mr. Miratore had indicated it, that you're really talking about two separate issues, processes here. We've got a very elongated process that's going to go on with an EA process on Kaler Road. We've got a subdivision plan in front of us that Mr. Miratore would like to have approved tonight. It would be, I think, a good situation on behalf of staff, that if we could have direction to go back and perhaps with the approval of the site plan, I'm sorry, the subdivision plan tonight, but allow enough flexibility that staff could go back and have some further discussions with respect to the other five feet, so that if, once the EA is done two or three years from now, that there would still be the opportunity to utilize that five feet if it was so needed in this. And we understand that we'd have to look at some kind of an arrangement through the subdivision plan, but perhaps there's some further dialogue, we could have that, that doesn't hold up getting the subdivision plan approved and still giving the O'Conners some assurance that through the EA, there would be a possibility for some slight realignment to the west, if we could somehow reserve that land during EA process, so perhaps that's something we could discuss.
I think the five feet, if necessary, will be reserved in effect for the municipality to take, simply by the fact that we've agreed to a 50-foot setback. So I mean, if that comes along, I don't want it to hold up the plan of subdivision. That's not fair, quite frankly, because the issue of the trees is not really our issue.
Sure, we understand.
It isn't our issue.
And I would agree with Mr. Miratore that, you know, we heard that, other than some issues on the apartment blocks, it has sound planning principles behind it. If we could get something that would allow us to proceed with that five-foot allowance, we would certainly have to have reports back to council, not knowing what the cost of that land would be. But I would think if this land was somehow reserved, that we could incorporate that as part of the EA process, and if at some future date we needed to acquire that land, those lands could be acquired as part of the overall construction. as part of the overall construction at that point in time.
Sure.
So I'm sure there's a mechanism there that we could.
We've done that in the past, that's right.
And, and the final comment to pick up on what Mr. Diodati said really is, if we're talking about this, we really need to, I mean, the, the suggestion was that we could look at a 7.5-meter planting strip. We can't do that and do both. We want to go back to having a, a 15-foot planting strip or else we've got problems as far as accessing our buildings. We have to move it further back. We don't know, at this point, we're moving it further towards the single-family residents at the back. So I think that aspect has to go hand in hand to that kind of flexibility.
Thank you, Mr. Miratore. I appreciate your approach. We're trying to certainly mitigate the impact and we appreciate your cooperation. And then other comments from members of council? Yes, councillor Wing.
I think what the residents want is a berm with mature plantings. And I had some discussion with staff, and I think what we're looking at is making it a condition of draft plan of subdivision, to have a clause in the subdivision agreement requiring the berm be established at the subdivision servicing stage, the dirt's being moved, put it there. And it would be something like the subdivision agreement between the developer and the city contains provisions whereby the developer agrees to establish a berm in the front yard intended with a three-to-one slope intensively planted with coniferous and deciduous trees all to the satisfaction of the city along the Kaila Road frontage at the time the services are installed. So if, after you closed the meeting, there's a motion to approve this, and I'd like this added in.
CEO wishes to make a comment.
Mr. Mayor, if I could just speak to that, and I, I think Mr. Miratore's partially indicated it, is that if we're looking at future consideration of buying that five-foot strip, that kind of clause may tie the hand of the proper development and, and no disrespect to the neighbors, but it would come down at a decision point in two or three years from now to say, would you prefer to have the five feet taken and have those mature trees in front of your own house protected or a berm across the street? Because it's quite possible you can't have both. And that kind of clause might tie our hands too much as we proceed down this path with the environmental assessment on this property. And I appreciate, you know, that that's what the residents have wanted, but, you know, as we work through this, there may be some options that would have to be weighed two or three years down. And that kind of clause may really hamper our ability to work out what is the best design on this roadway.
Or, Mr. Redhury. Or why would you put the developer to the expense of doing that and then turn around and take the, the part, the part of the berm away? I mean, it makes no sense. You really do that type of thing when you get to the development stage. So you're going to make us do all that, then you're going to come along and take the, the additional feet? I mean, that, that makes absolutely no sense.
Okay. Yes, councillor Wing.
There must be some sort of wording we can put in where that can be taken back out later depending on the outcome of the EA, like to make this a provisional sort of clause.
Well, Mr. Miratore did answer councillor Diodati's comment by saying maybe looking at putting some mature trees there. I'm not sure if he wants things further, but he did make comment. Councillor Peter Angelo.
Mr. Mayor, can the wording not be an either-or statement? So either this or that, so that the residents can at least be assured that.
I'm not sure if we're trying to predict the results of the EA. Is that, is that a concern Mr. Holman expressed earlier? Mr. Holman, is that, is that an issue that you have?
But as a condition to draft plan approval, it means I have to do it now before I can register the plan. So it's not an either-or. You're, you're saying to me, you've got to do it now and then you may take around and take it away. That's why it's left to the site plan stage.
Yes, appreciate your point, Mr. Miratore. Councillor Thompson.
I, I think we know where we're going here. First of all, we, we want to protect the trees. And if that's part of the motion that is made, so that the people are going to have that frontage and their trees protected, I think we should set aside the, the five feet in case that comes back, that the trees are going to be adversely affected sometime in the future. I think that the, the O'Conners have already said they'd like to be involved in the, the site plan. I think that's part of the motion and they will be able to go through the process and try to protect their interests as they go through this, during the development of the plan. So the roadway is a separate issue, we'll deal with that. And the environmental assessment goes on and as long as they're involved in the process, they'll be able to protect themselves. And I think that's probably the, the best of what we're going to get out of, of this. I still, I still like the idea of, of maybe some architectural feature with the apartments or step back to lessen the impact of a six-story apartment too.
Mr. Miratore, any comments?
I don't think I have anything more to say other than the fact that the site, so everybody's clear, because I don't want the O'Conners to misunderstand this, there is no site plan process in a plan of subdivision state. The site plan process would start at the time the development of those blocks start. I mean, the, the approval of the plan of subdivision is in place of a site plan process. Once the subdivision is approved with the conditions of draft plan approval, that is the subdivision. What happens in the physical construction of those apartment buildings would be subject to a site plan approval process. So I just want everybody to understand clearly what the effect.
Mrs. O'Connor, is that understood? Okay. Okay, any further questions you have? Okay. Fine, is there any further questions by members of council? Okay, at this point then, the public meeting with respect to the proposed zoning by law amendment is now concluded in the pleasure of council. Councillor Fisher, a motion to approve, seconded by councillor Maves. Any further discussion to the motion? You've heard the motion? Sufficient dialogue? Yes, councillor Diodati.
Your worship, you know, we've also mentioned that we'd like the O'Conners to be part of the site plan process when we get to that as well.
Yeah, to include.
And, and the neighborhood, the neighbors, yeah.
Yeah, but we're not approving that at this stage, so I think that's a made very clear. Okay. At this point then, we'll call the motion. All those in favor? Motion's carried, you answered, thank you very much. Thank you again. And Mr. Clerk?
Are you feeling that you've included this idea that staff work with the developer on the five feet? Okay.
Yes, absolutely. And also the site plan.
Councillor Fisher?
I believe there was enough dialogue tonight for everyone to realize where the residents and the developer and council and staff are coming from. So I believe that we will work together very close and nobody's going to be excluded. You're going to be included.
I'm sorry. Yes, I just missed that. The, Mrs., I'm sorry, councillor Wing, did you vote against that motion? I'm sorry, was that just, so that was just one opposition, correct? Councillor Wing. Okay, thank you. So noted. Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Okay, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, members of council. I have some comments to make this evening. I wanted to extend our sympathy to the families of Mrs. Lynn Wilson, who is a retired city employee in the clerks department on the passing of her husband, Paul Wilson, last week, and also to the family of Mr. Bob Kimill, who recently passed away. Bob was retired platoon chief with our Niagara Falls fire department. And once again, our heartfelt thoughts go with those families at this time. Also, I'd like to just bring you an update with regard to the Association of Municipalities of Ontario. Recently, we held a conference in Windsor. It was a pleasure to attend this year's conference for the Association of Municipalities along with councillors Diodati, Einoni and our CEO, Mr. Ken Todd. We were pleased to discuss issues of importance with the Honorable Chris Bentley, the Attorney General, regarding matters of sportsbook betting and its relationship to tourism. As well, we had an audience with the Honorable Deb Matthews, Minister of Health, where we provided information from our residents on the Niagara health system restructuring. Councillor Diodati and Einoni presented the findings of the ad hoc subcommittee at that time. In addition to our official, our official time slots with ministers, I had the informal discussions with Minister of Finance Dwight Duncan regarding sportsbook betting as well, along with Minister of Tourism Michael Chan regarding China's approved destination status and other tourism-related issues. And once again, this year, it was a successful conference and we were pleased to be there to discuss these issues for the benefit of our residents and our Ontario community. As well, the approved destination status, first official tourism delegation attended recently in Niagara Falls. It was an exciting day when we had the opportunity to welcome the first delegation from China to Niagara Falls as tourists under the approved destination status known as ADS. The federal minister of state for tourism, the Honorable Rob Moore, along with the provincial Minister of Tourism, Michael Chan and Zhang Guo, as vice chairman of the China National Tourism Administration, were in attendance. The Chair of the Niagara Parks Commission, Mr. Fay Booker, along with myself, had the privilege of welcoming this distinguished group at a luncheon at the Table Rock Restaurant, where we informed them about, we were informed again about all that our city had to offer them and of course, our region. We were also pleased to host them and we look forward to many continued good relations and many ongoing visits under the ADS in the future. In other events, last weekend, we held a special dedication in our community. Our recreation and culture staff organized an event to unveil a memorial plaque at the fountain in the corner of Bender Hill and Victoria Avenue in honor of Mr. Danny Daddio, a consummate volunteer and athlete and builder of the city. Danny Daddio received a fitting community tribute and when we unveiled the plaque in his name at the site. I want to thank councillor Thompson for his remarks and for all those who were in attendance to mark this occasion. Looking ahead, the school year is upon us next week and again, I encourage motorists around our city to be cautious as pupils take to the streets in buses, on bikes and as pedestrians. Please use cautions and pay attention, special attention in school zones and on school routes as students will be traveling in large numbers around our community. I wish everyone going back to school a safe, healthy and successful school year. Also, we're looking ahead with excitement toward being able to call our 420 highway the Veterans Memorial Highway. Councillor Peter Angelo has been working alongside staff, along with the Ministry of Transportation and myself, to confirm details of this new highway signage. We invite the community to join us for the unveiling at a ceremony on Thursday, September 23rd at 10:00 a.m. Further details will be forthcoming from our office and we'll be posting it on our website as well as we approach the date for this noteworthy commemoration. In addition, our 1812 Bicentennial Committee is hosting a major event on Sunday, October 3rd. It's called Celebration 2012, taking place at Legends on the Niagara, also of course, also once known as the battle site of the Chippewa Battlefield. And this historic gala will feature dinner, entertainment, silent and live auctions in many ways to help celebrate 2012 and assist in fundraising for the bicentennial. Event tickets are $50 and can be purchased by contacting the Niagara Falls History Museum at 905-358-5082. This concludes my remarks this evening. Move on to communications if we may. First of all, communications, Eminem Meat Shops requesting that September 16th be proclaimed as national family dinner night. Councillor Carey, I'm moved by councillor Carey, seconded by councillor Maves. Any further comments or questions? I haven't seen none. All those in favor? Motion's carried. Thank you. The second one being for Mr. Derek Costello, the council reconsidered the terms, reconsidered trams or streetcars for the people mover system. Mr. Costello has informed us he wishes to speak to his communication this evening, so with permission of council, we'll do so. Moved by councillor Thompson, seconded by councillor Einoni. All those in favor? Motion's carried. Welcome, Mr. Costello.
As a council and members of staff, I've since made proposals on this streetcar versus buses issue for years. I won't be boring you with figures, but I have done some figures in comparison buses' cost versus streetcar cost in the future. These figures come from the tire manufacturers and tire installers on how long they last and what they cost to replace. The comparisons are, for buses, if we're talking 27 buses, that would be $97,000 per year just for tires replacement for the whole fleet. And this is a requirement at the mileage that's predicted by our own people mover committee. The same thing for a streetcar is, well, it's almost ridiculous. A streetcar wheel will run 1 million miles before it requires replacement. And at today's rate, that would be $1,200. But being as with the mileage that we're anticipating, that would be 50 years from now, I don't know what it would cost then. So there's your comparison, $97,000 versus $144,000 over a period of 50 years as opposed to one year. The other comparison, of course, between buses and streetcars is the fuel costs. The fuel cost or diesel fuel cost for a bus works out to $8,500 per day or $765,000 per year for the whole fleet of those 27 buses. I, I understand 21, 20 buses will probably be running at once, 27 would be max and four or five would be probably reserve, repair and/or sitting there when it's necessary. All these figures are based on a 90-day season peak and the balance of the year running at a much lesser capacity, both for the streetcars and the buses. So I've given a very fair comparison. These prices and these figures all come from the local tire installers and the manufacturer of streetcars and the manufacturer of trams in Europe, Italy and in Idarrove, in the USA and also in Philadelphia where they're using new streetcars as we speak. The other cost, of course, on streetcars is for fuel. Streetcars are electric, as you're well aware, 11 cents per kilowatt, using like today's prices, which by the way, subsidized at 11 cents per kilowatt. That works out to $175,000 for the whole fleet per year, operating costs compared with the bus cost of $765,000. Now, there's one little caveat there. The Niagara Parks Commission, as you may be aware, has sort of inherited the ownership of three of the hydro plants along the Niagara River. One of those latest inheritors is the Canadian Niagara Power Company. That Canadian Niagara, Niagara Power Company still has the existing generators in it. According to the Ontario Generation, Ontario Hydro, when that was given to Niagara Parks, they were told they cannot use it to generate electricity for the grid, but they could use it to generate electricity to run, let's say, streetcars or anything else that would require that kind of power, which is not the same as house power. Because of that, indeed, if that was done, the streetcar costs to run them on electricity, which they do, would be zero. That's quite a comparison with the fuel cost of $765,000 a year for buses. As I've been told by the People Mover Committee and also Mr. Selsey, the cost of this is not to be borne by the taxpayer, but the cost of that $50 million, which is going to be used to build whatever people mover you choose in the future, the cost of running it and the cost of refurbishing it and using it for fuel, tires and all the other consumables will have to be borne by somebody. I've been told that it'll be carried by the stakeholders. I must remind our council, the biggest stakeholder so far has been the taxpayer, both supplying the $50 million from both levels of government, but also in buying the right-of-way, which we seem to be not using, which we were told we would be promised to use for the people mover system. This people mover system, if we do, or if council does decide to use some sort of tracked vehicle on the existing right-of-way, there's no cost to acquire the land, the land is already there. The cost of installation of those streetcars and the streetcar tracks and the cost of the units to run on the actual electric streetcars, I've outlined on a very simple plan, if I could distribute this to council, you might have it now. Do you have this plan ready?
Yes, yes.
Yes, you do.
Thank you, sir.
This plan actually has an outline of the proposed route. I've discussed this with Niagara Parks Commission extensively and in my discussion, what came up, which has come up many times, as some of our older councillors will know, is the breakdown of communication and talks between the city of Niagara Falls and Niagara Parks Commission on agreement of a mutually working system. So. So because of that, and because of that friction that might be there, I've segregated the systems but combined them where they join. Both systems, of course, I would anticipate, and so does Niagara Parks Commission, so does our own people mover, would have to run independently to be frictionless. In other words, to be no difficulty with the two parties running one system. I've outlined the Niagara Parks proposed system in green, the City of Niagara Falls system in red. I've included everything that was mentioned in the people mover's suggestion as to where they should stop and where they should go. Ditto for the Niagara Parks Commission. I've also included Queen Street. To back up further what I am saying about, and I have said many times in the past, about the public and the business people being mainly attracted to the use of a tracked vehicle on steel rails, in other words, a streetcar or tram or trolley, electric because it's environmentally wise, and on tracks and overhead wire because it's something that people will get out of their cars and ride willingly. In all other municipalities in the United States and a few in Canada, which I have documented, that have made moves like what I'm suggesting, it's been done because of somebody's concern. What has happened since in some of those instances where it's been installed a year or more ago, those things are already being improved on because it was so readily and instantly accepted. The ridership blossomed beyond the expectations and the studies. The reason being is because most of the municipalities that chose to go with electric streetcars chose to go with a vintage-looking device. Every device is all the same as far as must be handicapped, accessible, must be air-conditioned, must be computerized, must be radio-controlled with every other one, and must be absolutely safe as far as all the overrides in place. Not the ones just by the Ministry of Transportation, but the ones by the manufacturers themselves, and they're very expensive, far more expensive, I might add, than a bus. A bus will still go down the street with a dead driver. That's a pretty sad statement, but it's true. A streetcar won't. All these devices that I've outlined on this thing, I put the price, what the whole thing costs. It has been suggested by several councillors and Mr. Salsey that the price I am suggesting for the streetcars is way out of line compared with what the monies that are available and what buses cost. That's why I've got that scribbled detail on this plan. That, by the way, is backed up by letters from the streetcar manufacturers, up to date as of, within the month, letters from the people who install tracks and do it in asphalt roads, in concrete roads, and in grass. So all those prices have been included in this estimate.
Mr. Costello, the clerk just advised me that we're 10 minutes up, and you just want to wrap it up in a minute or so, if you could, please?
I just did.
Okay, thank you, sir. We appreciate it. There might be some questions. I'd like to have our CAO just make some comment. Appreciate you taking the time to develop this. I actually didn't make any comment about the value of your construction. I know that you've been working on this for a while, and I see that you came up with this price or this proposal last October. I know there has been much work done, and I know you're very creative in your approach, and I think if we could explain where we're going with this, you may understand a little bit more about the process. But I'd like our CAO to give some input, if he could, please, and just answer some of the questions that may have risen.
Well, thank you for being here tonight, Mr. Costello. I guess the first thing I would say is that when I look at your map, it very much looks like what we would consider to be Phase Two. And you mentioned the purchase of the railroad right-of-way, and what our committee's been doing is, we've been looking at the people mover system, which actually serves a much more extensive area than you've outlined on the map, including all the way out Lundys Lane to just about Town Line Road with the people mover system. So it encompasses all of the major tourist areas within the municipality. And what you've highlighted here in sort of the streetcar design, which would really take not too far off the former rail line right-of-way, is really what we're looking at for Phase Two. Looking at a fixed rail that could tie the downtown with both major casinos and all of the tourist destinations basically along the top of the escarpment. And that's why the lands were purchased originally. We still haven't given up hope that there will be a Phase Two, but with our Phase One, which is the rubber-tire bus system, is one that will get us, get the system established. And it's our view that in the future, if that system has the ridership numbers that we're expecting, it will lead to a Phase Two that would be more of a fixed rail like you're suggesting here. And what would happen is that that bus, that rubber-tire bus system, would then have an opportunity to link in at certain terminal points to that fixed rail. So you would have sort of a combined system of bus and fixed rail that would run from downtown right through the major tourist areas to feed both casinos and the Falls View tourist area. So I think the concepts are here that are something that we would look at in the future. Our timelines that we have right now with the project moving forward, we have all of our funding commitments in place, we have all of our capital funding requirements laid out, we have all of our funding partners in line, we have agreements that we're currently working on and hope to finalize those agreements very soon, and we're hoping to have a final agreement with the Parks Commission within the next few weeks. We've been working on agreements over the last several months, and we're getting very, very close to a resolution on that. But anyways, Mr. Mayor, those are my comments, and I do appreciate your feedback, Mr. Costello.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions, members of council, Mr. Costello? Councillor Thompson?
Well, I just want to make some comments. You've been working on this for, I don't know, what?
Forty-four years.
How much?
Forty-four years.
Oh, you beat us. I think John Holwer was the one who originally made the suggestion, and that's probably going back 25 years. You mentioned about the Parks Commission and separating because of disagreements. There's been no disagreement as far as the city is concerned. The original loop system, which was in the prime tourist area, a total loop system, was totally in agreement from this side of the fence. The Parks Commission has been reluctant to, in fact, even in our present bus system, have said they don't want to be involved with the city. They want their own system, and they want to look after it separately. That wasn't the city's feeling or the people mover committee's system. They wanted it all.
I agree with you.
Integrated, and it should have been one-stop, complete circle to service all these people. So you've been on the right track for 44 years, literally the track. I agree that is the solution to the problem. This has been pushed forward by the stakeholders. All the BIAs have voted on this and specifically said they want something done now, they want it done for next season, they want it, everyone wants it past their front door, and they want to have a bus system to take advantage of the $50 million. We were put in a position here a few weeks ago, if we didn't make a decision by the end of August, then the $50 million would be gone. And so everybody was rushing to judgment on this to try to find a solution, and each one of the stakeholders in the BIAs voted in favor of this system. It wasn't the city council or whatever, certainly we have to participate, but the stakeholders are the ones that made the decision to take advantage of the dollars. Now, the buses could be utilized to feed Lundys Lane and the other, Queen Street and the other outlying areas if that comes in the future. But I was the one who made the motion that we, in spite of going ahead with this now, we still want to try to have Phase Two and get a track system in place and hopefully make it interesting and exciting. And what the original guideline said, it should be an attraction in itself to generate the people utilizing the system. So what can I say? I agree with you 100%, but the timing and the dollars are here now and have to be taken advantage of, and I don't know what else we can do.
Thank you. Thank you. Councillor Maves?
Yeah, I'd just like to congratulate Mr. Costello, too. This is a, this is a great presentation, and having worked with the transit for many years, I think a lot of us envisioned this. I think when Mayor Thompson was with the transit, we envisioned this sort of thing. We're hoping that one day Niagara Transit would be able to do this. And I think what's happened now is, of course, it's always been a financial thing and also trying to get together with the parks, as mentioned earlier. And unfortunately, we could never do anything like that, and now all of a sudden, we got this windfall of money with a short timeframe, so we're going to have to go with a rubber tire system. And of course, I'm hoping this definitely will be Phase Two. So I just want to say that's a great proposal, and I hope that we'll see that come to fruition someday. So congratulations, thank you.
Mr. Costello, as I say, I just want to reiterate the point, and our CAO put it very well. We believe that the rubber tire will feed into the fixed rail, and that was the plan as we envisioned in Phase Two. These numbers you have provided us are certainly not without, are not going unheard, because when that time comes, certainly hopefully you'll be there at the table to be able to present as a proponent this very feature. So we have been working with the stakeholders diligently to try to have this become a reality. The rubber tire system, as I mentioned, will feed into the fixed rail, which will be the spine of the system. So, and it still grabs and takes in the traffic from the outlying areas, as you heard our CAO talk about. So I do appreciate your presentation this evening, and it's certainly a very timely one. It's just that we're in a different phase situation, so we're at Phase One, and as you heard our CAO and others say, we're still negotiating to wrap up. It was actually June 30th that we had to make our commitment for the dollars, which were approved by the federal government and provincial government, to have the process that we had presented to them, submitted to them by then, and approval given. So we're just wrapping up some of the finer details with our negotiations between the BIAs and the Parks Commission.
But can I ask, Phase Two, there is no money aside or set aside or even on the horizon for doing Phase Two?
That's right.
And Mr. Mayor, if I could, Mr. Costello, and what we have identified in Phase One of our project is that, you may recall, there was money that was provided to the city many years ago by FMC and OLG, which is the Casino and the Ontario Lottery and Gaming Corporation. And those funds are to be utilized and continue to be utilized for the people mover system. Our view is that as we move forward, some of those funds will be able to be used, utilized for future design work, future studies to determine the viability and the type of system that may be incorporated into a Phase Two. So there is some money there, and we've got our eye on that, that during the first five years of the people mover system, we will have some reviews at the end of that five years, first five-year period, and then make a determination on proceeding with Phase Two from that point on. But there are some monies there to get started.
One question. The success of Phase One will determine whether you do or do not do Phase Two?
That is the plan right now, yes.
We all agree on that, at least. But Phase One is buses.
Yes, it is.
And buses are not a desirable means of transportation for the public, even though they are public conveyance. And this is, all the studies allude and point to that, and yet we're still pushing for these buses. If, may I interrupt? If we're pushing for buses because of the shortage of time, because of the fact that you've got the $50 million and you have to say to the government, we are using the money, and here we've made this purchase, or we're moving towards make this purchase, could you not see somehow where we could do both systems within the $50 million? Because I certainly can't.
We're, with all due respect.
Combining both systems now.
Yeah, our feeling right now is we're barely going to be able to do the rubber-tire bus system.
That's because they're more expensive.
Well, it's just that it gives us more flexibility, and we feel that at this point, it gives us greater coverage to all of the areas that we need to have covered with all of our partners, whether it be downtown, Falls View, Clifton, out Lundys Lane. These are all areas that need to be covered, and all of the partners want those areas covered right from day one. And we believe the rubber tire system gives us that flexibility in order to accomplish that and then be able to build the ridership and have enough data to determine during that first five-year period where we may be headed with a Phase Two. And as we've indicated, the land component is already there, that is in the city's ownership, so there's a huge cost there that could be avoided in Phase Two. But we just really believe that the system needs to get up and running as a bus system first in order to justify a Phase Two as a fixed rail system.
Could I ask perhaps just one more thing? Would it be a consideration to do what other municipalities have done when they've gotten into this same discussion that we're in now, and that's to do a one-mile, half-mile, or whatever pilot project for the streetcars like now, while monies are still available?
Well, again, Mr. Costello.
On the existing right-of-way?
Well, again, we, right now, with our capital program that we've outlined to the federal and provincial governments and that their staffs have reviewed and we're ready to move ahead with, include having spent that $50 million. The $50 million can only be used on capital assets.
I realize that.
And it can't be used on operating, so we really need to have that spent in an operation. We have specific deadline dates. We believe that all of the proper assessments have been done. I'm just not even sure that even doing a mile, even if we could afford to do that, the amount of work that would need to be done in terms of environmental assessments and still meet our spending deadline of March of 2013, I'm not sure that could be met under those timelines.
Actually, it could, because both of those lands that I'm talking about do not need an environmental assessment done. If you recall, the tracks were just removed, it's a matter of putting them back in. That, by the way, comes under the Ontario rules, regulations for putting and reinstating railway tracks. I've already looked into that.
Appreciate that.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Costello. We appreciate your presentation. Thank you. Mr. Clerk, are there any further items for council's consideration?
Motion of the chair.
Yes, I motion to receive Mr. Costello's report. Please, moved by Councillor Anone, seconded by Councillor Peter Angelo. Any further comments? Having seen none, all those in favor, motions carried. Mr. Clerk, any additional items? Okay. Move on to ratification of Community Services Committee actions. I'm going to call on the Chair, Councillor Anone.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The following items are to be ratified from tonight's meeting of the Community Services Committee. The minutes of August 9th, 2010 meeting be approved. Under reports, 2010-51 financing for the construction of the Bob Gale complex, that the council requests the region of Niagara to issue debentures on behalf of the City of Niagara Falls totaling $32,812,500 for a period of 30 years with the Capital Reserve used to offset the difference. Under R.C. 2010-17 Niagara United Soccer Club Inc. agreements, that the agreements with Niagara United Soccer Club Inc. be approved, and that the mayor and council be authorized to execute the first two agreements. Under R.C. 2010-19 merging Trails and Bike Way and Park in the City Committees, that council approve the merger of the Trails and Bike Way Committee with the Park in the City Committee. Under T.S. 2010-22, the Niagara Falls International Marathon request, that council support the funding, support funding the costs associated for providing shuttle services for the Niagara Falls International Marathon on Sunday, October 24th, 2010, and the marathon organizers be advised that the future funding requests be submitted to council in advance of the budget deliberations related to grant requests. Under T.S. 2010-37 Niagara Airbus vehicles, that the report be received and filed. Under T.S. 2010-40 Niagara Falls Transit 50th Anniversary, that council support the past, present, and building for the future 50th Anniversary campaign through the provision of fare-free service on October 15th, 2010. Under T.S. 2010-39 Transit Agreement with Brock Students Union, one that the Niagara Falls Transit Service be provided to full-time Brock University students for the fall, September through December, and winter, January through April semesters for a three-year term effective September 20th, effective September 2010, that the Niagara Falls Transit Service be extended to Brock University in St. Catherine's, that the municipality enter into an agreement with Brock University Students Union to provide the service, that the mayor and the city clerk be authorized to execute the necessary agreement. Under T.S. 2010-42 Transit Agreement with the town of Fort Erie, that the municipality enter into an agreement with the corporation of the town of Fort Erie to supply transit service, and that the mayor and the city clerk be authorized to execute the necessary agreement. Under P.D. 2010-74 Appeal Committee of Adjustment Decision for 1010460 Ort Road, part of Lot 1 Concession 6 in Town of Croland, that the city authorize staff to withdraw the appeals to the Committee of Adjustment Decision for 10460 Ort Road and the part Lot 1 Concession 6 Bridge Road. Under M.W. 2010-56 Development Agreement with the MacLeod Square Inc., external services construction, including MacLeod Road access improvements, that the city enter into an agreement with the MacLeod Square Incorporated for the construction of external services and the entranceway from MacLeod Road, and that the mayor and the clerk be authorized to execute the development agreement subject to the confirmation of to execute the development agreement, subject to the confirmation of tender prices being within the scope of the city's obligations of the cost-sharing formula set out in this report. And that a new business, that staff draft a letter to the region requesting an estimate for waste collection fees for multi-residential properties and report back to council. And that's it. Nice move.
Moved by Counsel Inonie, seconded by Counsel Diadati. Any further comments or questions? We'll just get a second. Do you want a second item? Bring it up.
No, actually, it should have been in this. Should the deferral of--
You can deal with it.
Okay.
Okay. So, we'll get to that just in a second. So, all those in favor? Thank you. Motion's carried. Now, we do have an item that was referred from downstairs. It's item number, Report 2010-53, the Downtown Infrastructure Revitalization Project, project status and implementation plan. And it's an update as well. So, the pleasure of council, we have a recommendation here that the additional costs incurred phase one, the Downtown Infrastructure Revitalization Project be funded from the sewer reserves, and that council approve the proposed implementation plan for phase two, and that staff be authorized to proceed with the award of the request for proposals for the new sound system, RFP number 47-2010, and gateway arches, RFP 50-2010, subject to satisfying the requirements of the city's purchasing policy and the expenditure allocation set out in this report for these components. Counsel Inonie.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And thanks to council for the deferral downstairs to upstairs. As Chair, I can't defer it myself, so I appreciated the support. And I don't know where to start, and I'm asking for the patience of council, because I'm going to try to do this slowly and get through it all. I asked, I called staff today and asked a number of questions. I am adamantly opposed that the additional cost incurred for this come from sewer reserves. We have untold millions of dollars we need for sewer projects, and I don't think we should be touching the sewer reserves. But I want to step back a minute and say that we've had many, many, many emails today talking to us about the beautification stimulus fund. And just so council's aware, there is no such fund. And I want to make it clear through the information staff gave to me today. We applied under the ISF for infrastructure money. And I won't bore council with this entire document, but I actually asked staff to supply me with the application that we gave to the federal government for money. And I want to read it to council. This project, and this was from Mr. Holman applying for the money. This project involves a wide range of infrastructure improvements to the city's downtown area. The pedestrian walkway along Queen Street consists of old unit pavers that have been heaved and sunk over the years. They are in need of replacement with solid concrete walkway and colored banding along the curb. Like many downtowns, Queen Street is quite narrow, and there needs to, there is need to replace some of the street parking with widened pedestrian walkways. The street lighting is in need with repair, some new poles and replacements of lamps. The eastern gateway is key to the revitalization of downtown, and the infrastructure improvements in this area include the reprofiling of a section of Queen Street, altering the traffic lanes, and other intersection improvements at River Road. The underground infrastructure improvements include the relocation of a hydro pool, drainage improvements, replacement of an old cast iron water main, and road improvements at Queen Street and Erie. The project category was local road infrastructures. Now, I want to explain to council what there is still left over money for. After paying for the project overruns downtown, there is still money left for the downtown to do their street lighting at $48,000. Their eastern gateway money is still there, $500,000. Their roadway improvements is still there, $243,320. The streetscaping money is still there, $272,600. The 15% contingency based on those fees are still there, and there's still $200,000 roughly left over for archways. So, I was a little surprised to see the report come to us, asking us to fund money out of our sewer reserves for the rest of the beautification project. So, I asked Mr. Holman, because the application to ISF was for infrastructure and not beautification, and that's a fact, did we, in fact, go over the infrastructure budget? No, we didn't. We could have used every cent that we got from the ISF money to fund the infrastructure road improvements down there and been perfectly fine and complied with the application to the project. Is there still $1.4 million left? Yes. And I highlighted to you what they can still do with that $1.4 million. If you had spent all the money, would we have been in compliance with the application to the federal government and the provincial government for the money? Yes, we would. The city created the two phases. The application to the feds and the province was for road infrastructure work. It's us here that separated it into two phases. One project, one application, we broke it into two phases for implementation purposes. And some of the items requested on the list that we go into our sewer reserves for are for street lighting there, streetscape improvement there, roadway improvements there, a wireless sound system for the downtown, not there. There's a portion of their archway network. A downtown parkette, phase one, $555,700 is not there. It is there if they choose to do that instead of other beautification programs, but that's their decision, not ours. Eastern gateway improvements, $500,000 there, still there. Contingency, still there. I'm confused as to why we're being asked to go into our sewer reserves if all these monies are still left over. And then, I'm even more confused to find out that the archway network, the downtown parkette phase, and a number of the other, of the other requests were requested after we submitted the ISF funding, and they came up this past May. We submitted the ISF funding last year. So, I'm not quite certain how you go about doing that and explaining it to the federal and the provincial government. I want it clear that we got an email from Mr. Groon last week telling us that our staff gave a commitment to him many times that this council would approve monies coming from the sewer reserves, and there isn't a person on our staff that agrees that they did that. As a matter of fact, I got a direct no. Nobody told Mr. Groon this. I got a response from somebody Mr. Groon passed my email to, because I asked him. I think that's a pretty, pretty bold statement to say, "Your staff told us that council would presuppose that you would take that money out of the sewer reserves." So, I said, "Please tell me who in our staff told you that." Well, nobody in our staff did. I don't have a response from Mr. Groon after three requests to tell me who did, but I did get a response from somebody else telling me that it's not important to point blame or find the finger of blame. We're really looking to work together. And, Mr. Mayor, I'm saying to you and to council, we still have the money there to work together without going into our sewer and water reserves. I also looked into today, what are we doing for the other BIAs? Because Main and Ferry BIA, Fallsview BIA, Lundy's Lane BIA, and Clifton Hill BIA all do their own beautification. And really, by asking us to go into our reserves, no matter where you're getting it from, you're asking those BIAs to help the downtown BIA also do their beautification. I'm not quite certain how much we have to give to comply to the downtown steering committee or the downtown BIA or Historic Niagara, but I can't see putting wants in front of needs. And I want to highlight two other things. We had the Ryle residents coming here and having members of council go and listen to the Ryle residents, tell us how unhappy they were that the monies for their road infrastructure and sewer infrastructure was not there. And we told them, "Well, you know what? We're going to patch. We're going to do just an overlay till we can get to your project, and that might be within the next 10 years. But we're going to consider taking sewer infrastructure reserve money and putting it into a parkette and a sound system for outside downtown." I'm dumbfounded. We also attended, a number of us, the Chippewa meeting, where you had close to 500 residents show up in two separate sections, and our staff almost got pitchforked and stabbed by trying to explain to the Chippewa residents that the money that they really need to put in the water infrastructure out there wasn't there. And I can tell you, and so can Counsel Fisher and Counsel Wing, that they said, "If council cannot invest the money out there, then don't come to them and tell them that they have to put their own private monies into..." And I'm sorry, Mr. Holman, what was that project? It was the backflow meters. And nor were they happy that we were using them as a pilot project to do something they believed that the city should fund. But again, we're being asked to take sewer reserve money and put it into downtown beautification. I don't think any of Chippewa is going to be happy that we choose to do that. And I also want to highlight, Mr. Mayor, that the standing of the downtown beautification committee or the downtown steering committee is kind of in flux now, too. I spoke to Mr. Ira Fiede today, and he explained to me that two more members of that committee have stepped off, and you really only have two, two people and four members of council. So, there's going to be a recommendation coming to us that we really take a look at that committee, too. I'm just saying to council, we're going into an election. We've just finished a devastating budget year. We are not out of a recession yet. As a matter of fact, if you watch the state's American news and Canadian news, they think we're rolling back into another one. And I really don't think that any resident sitting outside of the downtown area would approve of us taking their infrastructure improvement monies and putting it into a sound system and a parkette in the downtown. I'm not going to support that recommendation from staff. And when everybody's done speaking, I hope they understand that this is all fact. Every ounce of information I provided to you today was from our staff. My numbers are correct, and I really think the downtown should be thankful we didn't have to use the other $1.4 million for infrastructure, and they're getting it for beautification.
Yes, perhaps we should have a qualification. Now, Mr. Holman, for the benefit of those watching, you might want to just review the matter of the infrastructure, status of the downtown works that were completed. So, I'd like to just indulge our Director of Public Works to review what we're talking about, so people understand. Mr. Holman, could you just cover what happened in respect of the downtown improvement so far, underground work?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Counselor Inonie has hit on some, some key points here, but perhaps if I could just take a second to go through a little bit more of the chronology that might give us some better context here. Original application for funding under the downtown revitalization, our project under the ISF fund was turned down, and we reapplied and included some infrastructure work to, as part of a resubmission. That second submission was approved, and we reported to you in November of last year that we would like to move ahead with the project in two phases. The first phase was an underground, underground infrastructure project, which was awarded in January. The project started in the, in the spring of this year and was finished in June. In the report, we, the outline here, some of the issues that we encountered during the process. It was a project that was not properly screened by our staff. We ran into some cost overruns, which were regrettable, but I believe inevitable, under the circumstances. And as a result, we have to find an additional $852,000 to cover the costs that we had originally planned in the first phase. There are a couple of options for funding that cost overrun, as mentioned in the report. The first would be to use sewer reserves, which are typically set aside for unplanned expenditures, such as this, and used to help offset the pitfalls that occur from time to time in large capital projects. The other option would be to use the rest of the money available in this project, or the second phase, to help offset that fund, those cost overruns. As Counsel Inonie points out, there still are a number of decisions that have to be made with respect to expenditures in the second phase. Two of them are on in the recommendation tonight, one dealing with the sound system, the other dealing with the arches. These components were derived through a public process. You may recall, in May, we reported back to you, indicated that the above ground, the phase-two project, we wanted to look at some additional features, and we wanted to get some feedback. We held a charrette in June, and about 50 people participated in that process. We looked at a couple of components that were essential in moving ahead. They're listed there on page six, dealing with street lighting and streetscaping improvements, some roadway improvements to the curb lines and to the existing drainage, the sound system, the archways, the parkette concept, which is included as an attachment in your drawing, and eastern gateway improvements. There's another concept drawing that was developed there. And we put together some numbers beside them to try and show you how we can get back to that $2.27 million that was approved originally for the second phase. So, council has, you also see that there's a list of streetscape features that were not included, because we weren't able to squeeze them into the budget for a couple of reasons. The sidewalks and the crosswalk components that were attractive and were identified by the, by the people attending the charrette as important features were not able to be included for a number of reasons. One of them is that a lot of the businesses recognize they've just come through a fairly hectic construction, that there were some impacts to their operations, and they didn't want to have to go through that again. They're also looking at impacts on construction as we get closer to the Christmas season, where a lot of the businesses, it's made, or break it for them. So, they've asked that we hold off on any of the work that would impact their businesses and put them into a subsequent phase of this project. The long and short of it is, is that council can make decisions about what elements they would like to have included in the second phase. And with a key objective here is trying to maximize the amount of money that we're getting under the ISF approved application. So, as we go through one element at a time, or in this case, a couple at a time, we can make decisions about where we want to make those investments. You may note that you received a memo from, from the clerk that has the results of the RFPs. The sound system closed on Tuesday, the arches closed on Friday, and those numbers weren't available for the, for this report. But there's a separate recommendation for that.
Mr. Holman, specifically, I think that you should explain to the residents that Appendix A, why the additional cost increases took place and what you discovered in the first phase of this project. I'd like that to be clarified. I have some misinformation from the public that they're sending emails through, not understanding why the overages. I'd like you to explain that for everybody who's watching. So, if you could take, take the time to go over Appendix A with, with the explanation, please.
Appendix A lists the extras and the additional cost increase. The first item dealing with the sanitary sewer on Queen Street. We are, again, we're replacing the old infrastructure. We're relying on the records that we have available to us. In a lot of cases, in some cases, we found out that the information was accurate, but in a lot of the cases, we had made wrong assumptions as to how deep the sewer was, where the sewer laterals were connected, and a lot of decisions then would have to be made in the field, which were different from what we had shown on our design drawings. As a result of that, we incurred about $95,000 cost associated with those changes. In the second case, because of, in one case, the sewer had to be rerouted, we had to change the scope of the project and extend a sanitary sewer down Ontario Street, or, sorry, Ontario Avenue, that was not part of the original program. And as a result, we've incurred some additional costs there to the tune of just over $200,000. This work was originally included in our original concept plans when we first had a look at it, but had been removed as we tried to focus just on Queen Street itself. However, because we had to, because we had to reroute the sewer, we had to build this section that wasn't part of the original tender. The largest cost overrun was associated with rock excavation. And although we had some boring soils information as to how deep the rock was in certain locations, we had used a tender that had, that was structured in a way that paid for rock excavation as part of a provisional item, instead of providing a calculation as to how much rock we had, we would have anticipated. There is cost savings of probably a couple of hundred thousand dollars. Had we done it the alternate way, we still would have incurred some cost, because in some areas that we had assumed rock was located, and it wasn't. some areas that we had assumed rock was located, and it wasn't, and we had to use different equipment to move that material. In the case of item number four, some additional sewer work that had to be done on St. Lawrence. As you may know, a lot of the sewage that comes through the downtown core travels through a large trunk sewer that is not particularly aligned within the road allowance. There's a lot of uncertainty. Had we had additional time to do some test digs, we might have been able to determine the exact location and depth, and would not have had to incur some additional standby costs associated with that connection. There were some other soil conditions that we ran into. Construction during the spring, quite often you run into wet soil conditions. As a result, the trenches have a tendency to be overexcavated, which resulted in some additional granular material having to be used in the backfill. And that cost was somewhere in the neighborhood of $260,000. We had some additional costs associated with scheduling at the request of the BIA and at the request of the Ontario Provisional Court. We had to delay construction and reschedule it for a weekend as a result of the additional rock excavation that caused, that disrupted the proceedings at the courthouse, for example. And some additional costs associated with trying to mitigate the impacts of dust and noise during the Easter season. As a result, Mr. Mayor, there is a deduction for the contingency that we had in the contract, but there still is a net cost overrun of $852,500.
Great, thank you very much. Counselor Wing and Counselor Iannoni.
Thank you. Counselor Iannoni was very eloquent. I can hardly add to that except to say that enhancement of aesthetics is a BIA responsibility. It's not a taxpayer's responsibility. And I have a very simple motion to make. It's that the additional costs incurred during the project be funded from the ISF program funding and not from the sewer reserves. And I'd like to call that recorded.
Okay, could you repeat that, please?
That the additional costs incurred during this project be funded from the ISF program funding and not from the sewer reserves.
That's a motion by Counselor Wing and seconded by Counselor Iannoni. And we have requests for recorded vote. Yes, I have Counselor Di Addati and Counselor Thompson. Okay, Counselor Di Addati, next.
Yes, Your Worship. I've got a question, if we could, I guess this would be for our Finance Director, Todd Harrison. My question is, it's obvious we had a sewer overrun for some unforeseen circumstances. We've got pipes that have been in the ground for, since the 1800s, bedrock they didn't count on, pipes that were not in our drawings. There's a lot of surprises once they got under the ground. So my question is, typically, if we have a duty, well, my first question, I guess, is Mr. Holman, Your Worship. Have we had sewer overruns before in other areas of the city? Has this happened before?
Mr. Holman?
Yes. Okay, all right. Okay, so yes, we've had them. So my question is, typically, how do you fund overruns? And how does it happen in the rest of the city?
Mr. Holman, or Mr. Harrison?
Okay, through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Di Addati. Normally, how it works for all municipal works, capital projects, the three areas principally being roads, water, and sewer, that at the end of a project, if we have the actual costs come in lower or higher than what the tendered price or the budgeted price, that money is put into what we call a capital holding reserve, which is then available moving forward. That is the city's cushion, so to speak, the reserve cushion for overruns that may occur. In this particular case, because the overruns on the first phase are attributable to stuff that occurred underneath the ground, it would apply to, since it's primarily sewer cause, because as you recall, we get funding from our sewer utility budget, our water utility budget, and then the tax budget funds the roads. We try to manage the expense to the actual area that the revenue is derived. And in the case of this one, it would seem a natural recourse that the sewer reserve would be the area that we would use to offset the over expenditure.
All right, thank you. So a sewer overrun would come out of a sewer reserve? And if we happen to have an under run and there's a surplus, that would then go to that same reserve?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. So my next question is, in that reserve, is there enough money to cover the overrun from the sewer construction?
Right now, yes.
Okay. You know, Your Worship, and I can see the panic in the business owners downtown right now because new sewers, although they're necessary, they don't bring one single extra visitor to the downtown. It doesn't help their bottom line. It doesn't help them pay their taxes. It doesn't help them in any way. The important step now is what we do above the ground, which is the attractor, which is going to bring people to the city, Your Worship. And I think, Your Worship, this fund was created for a purpose. It's to offset overruns. I think that's where the money has to come from. And to me, it's very clear. Thank you, Your Worship.
Thank you. Counselor Thompson?
Yes, I, it sounds like that this was another Garner Road or Grassy Brook construction job with all these overruns. Really, these are two separate issues. Do we have a responsibility as a municipality to look after the infrastructure in the ground? Through you to Mr. Holman?
Mr. Holman?
Obviously.
Of course.
Okay. Okay, that's all I wanted. Anyway, and I'm on the committee that meets with the downtown. And first time I ever heard, when I read this report the other day, was the $500,000 for a parket at the side here and several other. Certainly, I've heard about the PA system throughout the downtown. I've heard the discussion about the arches. The monies for that, the costs involved, aren't even in as yet. That's something that's been discussed. But there are so many unknowns on this situation. I really think that we have to, and we have to determine what the downtown people want. They know that there's some shortfalls here. We should be finding out what are their priorities and what, you know, if this park has to be delayed for a year for $500,000, I would think that's an easy way to look after the overrides. Are there some other things that are there? I don't know. There's a lot of mysteries, and it's easy to see how we got into this situation by $800,000 in sewer work that we didn't know that we were going to have these problems. So I think we got a lot of investigation to do in this. Am I concerned about putting it through the sewer reserve? I think it's premature to even make a decision on that. I'm not willing to do that. I'd like to see what the whole situation is. What are the priorities downtown? What can be deferred or what can be deleted so we can catch up on this whole scenario? Bottom line is, you don't want to, we've got a downtown revitalization that is being looked at and examined by probably every municipality across the province because of the success it's had and the transformation that has taken place. It's absolutely wonderful, but it's not there yet, and it's still very fragile. And anything we do, that quick knee-jerk reaction to make decisions that prevent that from moving ahead are going to be problems. I was pleased to hear Mr. Holman's comments that people want to put a hold on things right now anyway because of the winter season and the Christmas season coming up. They don't want to have any construction and things going on. So I think that gives us the time to really take a close look at exactly what is being proposed, exactly what the expenditures are, and how they can fit in our overall budget without doing something quickly and taking away from reserve funds.
Counselor Carrion?
I was interested to see what Counselor Thompson was going to do then, look for deferral after?
I have no problem with motion, but I think we've got to work with all of it.
Okay. How much money is left in the reserve fund as we speak today?
At the end of last year, there was 1.4 million dollars in the reserve fund. We haven't used any of it this year on any projects, so it still remains at 1.4. If we were to take the 852 out of it, it would be 550 or so.
Yes, yes. Just on that point, Your Worship, under our consent agenda, we have MW 201055 Municipal Services Improvement. It's to deal with the works that we did on Dunn Street between Atlantis and Stanley Avenue. Were we not under budget there? Just a bit over $486,000, like almost half a million? Mr. Harrison?
Yes, I mean, the tender did come in under budget. Again, that's the preliminary budget that we have, the starting point going forward. Again, after we have construction is really when we would, when we know what monies were spent. But you're quite correct, there is potentially room on the Dunn Street project that we're not going to use all of the monies that would be allocated in that particular tender.
So generally, then, we would just transfer that half a million dollars into our reserves? That's the general practice, correct?
Well, it, again, we're only dealing with an estimate right now, a tendered project. Again, at the end of the project, if that was finished, that's what would occur. Again, some of these projects overlap over the course of the year, meaning they're started, like the Dunn Street project will probably start in the fall, and overlap won't be finished until next year. So it wouldn't be, there wouldn't be any decision on the transfer until next year.
Okay, thank you. I just want to answer a couple of questions. Counselor Thompson, just so you're aware, and we do have a presenter this evening who would like to make some comment possibly from the BIA. We did hold, with the downtown business people, we did hold charrettes during Spring Licious as well. The same charrettes were held. Bob Bolowick has been coordinating the requests by the BIA, and the BIA has made its point very clear to the city in the liaison of the information through Mr. Bolowick's office. Our CIO was actually working, conducting those charrettes even during Spring Licious. And I'm not sure, Mr. Todd would like to make a comment, but a lot of dialogue has been ongoing between the businesses, what they want to see, when they want to see it happen. And most recently, meetings were held in the last couple of weeks and to determine what they wanted to see. So, Mr. Todd, would you qualify that, please, just to confirm what Mr. Bolowick has done?
Well, Mr. Mayor, what I'd just like to highlight is just on part of the recommendation. And I can understand some of the frustration that council's feeling in terms of the number and variety of items that are on the list. And as Mr. Holman indicated, there are some of those that probably can be put off to another night. For example, timing of sidewalks and things of that nature. You will note, though, that what the BIA is very anxious to get approved, and it's two other parts of the recommendation tonight, are the sound system and moving forward on the archways. And what you will hear, and what I can articulate for you, is that the BIA is very anxious to get those two pieces of infrastructure installed or partially installed before the Christmas season. They feel it's very integral to them having a successful winter season, and those two systems are important to them. And that's why we've set that out. You had a memo from the clerk tonight that highlighted that we've been through two RFPs, and we do have costing on those. So we do know what those two components are, and those two components can proceed in isolation of the rest of the funding under the project. So a decision that council may want to consider tonight is, if you don't, if you want to defer a decision, or you make a decision on how the other overrun on the sewer funding takes place tonight, there would still be enough money left over. I think Counselor Iannoni had indicated what that room in the budget is, but there is still room. If council wants to at least allocate part of that to the sound system and the archway so that can proceed, we would then report back later and tell you what the other components are. But making it clear tonight, if you make a decision on those, then that money is spent, and it lessens the amount that you may be able to do on sidewalks or parkets or other features that are highlighted in the report.
So to qualify the concern, Counselor, what happened was, the bid was submitted, proposals were drawn such that the work had to be completed by the end of October for this work with the Festival Lights joining a partnership this year downtown. They're expecting, I believe, 150 coaches, which we heard at an earlier presentation of last several weeks from the Festival Lights. And what the business people were hoping and were being encouraged to do was to have us support the completion of these two items. And that's why we have this information that the clerk supplied us as additional information tonight so that they can proceed to get the work done by the end of October. Now, Mr. Phil Ritchie is here to speak on behalf of the downtown BIA with respect to this as well. So if you're going to talk about that, I'd like to have him qualify it with your forbearance. So we have a decision to make with respect to this whole thing. Counselor Iannoni?
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, Mr. Todd hit the nail right on the head. We have enough room to drive a transport truck through the gap that's still left. I'm confused when I hear overrun. We didn't have an overrun. Our application to the federal government and provincial government was for under-the-ground infrastructure. What wasn't under the ground was included in the description I read to you, and the monies are there for that. You gave a Chamber of Commerce speech and a number of other speeches where you highlight that it is record number of dollars that we've put in the ground. You used the downtown as an example. I don't care they went over 852,000. That's $852,000 worth of underground infrastructure work we don't have to pay for later. I'm confused. You can't use it as a positive and use it as a negative at the same time. This council put that amount of money in the ground in the downtown. That can be nothing but positive. I don't know how we're spinning the negative out of that. Last year, when we did budget talks, we sent our staff back over and over and over again to live within the revenue means we had left from the tax dollars the residents pay. That's all we're asking the downtown to do now. You have a million four. That's what's left out of this infrastructure money. If you want to use that money for a sound system, knock yourself out. But you have to take something else out of your budget. You might have to take an arch out. You want to pass tonight's recommendations under number one, to approve the tenders for the arches, knock yourself out. You use that within your million four. I don't know why this council is expected to live within their budget and not borrow more. Every one of us talks about the debt. We're probably going to campaign on the debt. Why would we go more in the hole for the downtown than the million four left from them? They're going to have to make the same hard decisions that this council had to make last year when we looked at our budget. Decide what you want to fit in the million four and do it. But you can't go out to the residents and talk about your record infrastructure dollars and crow about doing the downtown and yet complain that we put 900,000 more than we have there. That's sucking and blowing at the same time. I'm proud we did that. It doesn't bother me that we did that. It's just tax dollars we don't have to use to do it in the future. But don't ask residents to fund tax dollars, Counselor Thompson hit the nail on the head, for a parket and other things that they decided to throw in when they thought they had a windfall from the ISF money. Council has to live within their means, the residents have to live within their means, and now the BIA is going to have to live within their means. I don't know what's so difficult about that.
Mr. Todd, you want to qualify again the step-by-step process that the BIA used with regard to qualifying what infrastructure monies were remaining and how that money could be attributed in the future with regard to this project? We had some overruns, as we know, there definitely were overruns, there's no question with regard to the contracts we let and the increases. So would you just qualify that, please?
Mr. Mayor, if I could just put, and I think Mr. Holman did a good job, but I'll try to just put in some numbers. The total, just so the public understands, the total budget for this project was 3.9, almost $4 million. And of that, we're getting about $1.8 million from the federal and provincial governments. But what Phase One has cost us in terms of all of the underground and infrastructure improvements that Mr. Holman's talked about is about $2.5 million. So in a sense, we're standing here tonight still within 1.4 million dollars of our budget. We haven't overspent the budget. It's just a decision as to what do we spend the remaining budget on. So you really have two decisions. Do you want to have the Phase Two live within the 1.4 million dollars that Counselor Iannoni has talked about? Or do you want to allow the 2.2, 2.2 million dollars that's proposed in the report to do all of those above-ground works, which would mean that you would allocate that additional sewer- those above-ground works, which would mean that you would allocate that additional sewer work that you did to our sewer reserve? So those are really the two decisions council has to make. You have two options before you. You go with the project as presented, and you fund the overage on the sewer work to the sewer reserve, or you live within the budget and cut back on the scope of works as proposed under Phase 2. So that's really where we're at tonight. And, Mr. Mayor, in terms of the allocation of the resources for Phase 2, a lot of these concepts and ideas came out of the Downtown Steering Committee. We've had extensive dialogue with that group, the concepts of the sound system, the archways, some of the parquet design. A lot of that conceptual work has come out of the Downtown Steering Committee, and has come out of, as you say, some of the charrettes and the public feedback that we've heard. So some of them are concepts that have been evolving really since March, when this project really started to take shape, and all of those concepts and components of Phase 2 are outlined in the report. Again, council really has a simple decision to make tonight, and I've already outlined that to you, Mr. Mayor, and I have this motion on the floor.
Good, thank you. Counselor Carrion?
Thank you, Worship. Could you, through you to Mr. Todd, give us the outline of the, of the funding breakdown, on who's putting in what for the total project?
Yes, and I, the treasurer, might have it more easily at hand, but, for example, if you look at the report before you tonight, at the top of page 6, it does highlight some of the funding that was already committed and perhaps the treasurer's.
Through the mayor to Counselor Carrion, yes. On the, you're talking the Phase 2 project, part of the project?
I'm talking total, Mr. Harrison.
Okay.
How much is, how much is that coming up?
Well, it's 1.
1.8 approximately coming from the federal government. There was a, there is a transfer of about $500,000 that comes from the sewer and water operating budgets for the underground. The, the region, through their CSO funding, is approximately another 477. And, and then, if you recall, we had, a number of years ago, we had taken a debenture on, for, it was called the Public Realm work down in the, the city, the downtown area. There was approximately $400,000 left of that, and that was used as well. And the last thing is, to match our dollars, to match our, our funding requirement under the ISF, we had used some reserve funds out of the water area for another $400,000. So those were the funding sources of the original project.
And let's just qualify again, so we understand very well, Mr. Harrison, the original project with Peters, when they awarded this contract, was for $1.69,354, $354,000. Now, it's $1.7 million. What we have is an overrun of 8.52, so there was an overrun on the Peters contract. Is that correct?
On the Peters contract, on the first portion of the, of the ground.
Right. So this council had approved the $1.69,91,354.40 as, as the cost of that contract. Now we have an overrun. So there was an overrun of $852,000.
On the first phase, but as, as Mr. Todd has indicated, the total project is still underspent.
That's right.
Because if you have to look at the two phases, the two phases were going to cost approximately $3.9 million.
Exactly.
We spent to date $2.5 million, of which, the money that we've spent to date will qualify to get our portion, our two-thirds, out of the federal government through the ISF funding.
And Counselor Dadd asked that question, of course, and you asked, you answered him with regard to the overrun. We have overruns in sewers, we have a surplus account, a cost over-under account, which, which you can take it from, as you said, has a surplus of balance of one, roughly one point.
Again, again, and, Mr. Mayor, I think Mr. Todd explained it, is that council, the decision before council right now is to whether we want to close out Phase 1 and say that is separate and fund from our reserves that element to leave Phase 2 in its entirety.
True.
If, if that's not the case, then, and you choose not, you know, that's not the case, we can continue to hold the Phase 1 open until such time that decisions are made on Phase 2 as to what the extent of the Phase 2 spending will be.
That's right. And it means it's very clear that the downtown BI has selected a list of priorities. They've established that through their discussions with staff, and, and they've set their priorities. And we have now an overrun underground. The question is, and I think Counselor Daddi pointed this out, what happens above ground? We talked about the things that beautify the downtown, the things that make things happen. We have still money to spend under this contract, so you're well aware that we can still do it within the amount that was originally approved, but something down the line, either sidewalk or something else down the line, will be preempted from being complete. Mr. Todd, is that correct?
No.
Okay, so that's clear. Counselor Carrion?
Can I finish here, Your Worship? So then, really, whether or not we take this money out of the sewer reserve, or whether we take it out of the balance of the money, and then we decide that we want to do the other things downtown, we have to come up with the money either way.
True.
So, isn't it, that's the difference, really?
Well, right now, you're at, if you were to look at the two phases, and you were going to keep Phase 2 in its entirety, you would have, you were short, okay?
Right.
So the decision then is, do you want to proceed with Phase 2 as, as is, and leave that in its entirety, even though that all of the components of it, as Mr. Todd and Mr. Holman have indicated, they're not completely identified as to whether it's a parquet, whether, you know, sidewalks, whatever, you want to proceed with that, or whether you want to, and to necessitate that, you would need to fund the extra monies that cost on the contract with the Peters contract on the underground. You would have to find that source of funding.
Right. So either way, I agree with Counselor Thompson, that to proceed, we should have some say and some control on what we do or don't do going forward. Whether or not we take the money out of the reserve fund, or whether we take the money out of what's left, I still think that this council should have some say and some control on how we spend.
And we haven't given that up, Counselor.
Certainly, as staff, we, we recognize that it is council's decision to make those, you know.
Yeah, we've always retained that. So, members of council, we do have Mr. Ritchie here who'd like to make a comment. I'm advised by the clerk that he's here to speak on behalf of the downtown VA. So can I have a motion to have Mr. Ritchie speak? Moved by Counselor Peter Angelo, seconded by Counselor Daddi. All those in favor? All those in favor, if they're paying attention? All those in favor allowing Mr. Ritchie to speak on behalf of the BIA? Please raise your hands. Thank you.
Motion on the floor.
I know he just wants to address the matter before the motion's made, so your motions could vote it on. So, Mr. Ritchie, we have a motion on the floor, just for the information of council.
Mayor Selsey, members of council, senior staff, thank you very much for this opportunity to introduce myself to the city of Niagara Falls in this formal setting. My name's Phil Ritchie, and I'm the chief operating officer now for Historic Niagara Development, Inc., a role that I'm absolutely thrilled to have and started earlier this summer. And Mr. Green has asked me to get involved, to try and add some daily glue to what I think is one of the most exciting, absolutely exciting revitalization projects anywhere. And I could certainly jump my car and drive probably six or eight hours in any direction, not find something that has the potential of this downtown. And you're all to be congratulated for the momentum that it enjoys today, and for the incredible strides. I mean, I just remember, two or three years ago, I built a project over on Morrison Street, an ultra-green apartment building just a couple blocks over, and I've just absolutely watched this area spring to life. And I just wanted to make a couple of comments to share with you my view as a relative newcomer to downtown Niagara Falls, but indeed, a passionate downtown person. And some of you folks I've known and met through different organizations around the region, where we share ideas about how to revitalize downtown Niagara in the broad sense here as a region. The moment that we're at, I think, is extremely important. It was, it was mentioned earlier that we're at a moment of fragility, or we're not quite over the hump yet. I think that's absolutely the case. And it's, it's one of those moments where there is no second place, and 90% just doesn't get it done. It has to be a full commitment. I think this, this room has followed terrific process. The charrettes that I attended early on, that were fostered downstairs, were extremely well laid out, lots of options, but they were well attended by stakeholders, both on the street and lots of other people. And certainly, our office, in the short time that I've been there, has received lots of comments, and I'm talking to people on the street, and certainly, the members of our team are talking to people on the street, on a daily basis about how important this, this project is and its momentum to date. The point that we're at here is that we're trying to revitalize a city's downtown that has a world-class reputation, a world-class name recognition. And we're one of the, virtually the only cities around the world with our positioning on a global sense that hasn't accomplished us yet. So tonight, we've talked about $800,000 and where that should come from, and somebody eloquently pointed out that people don't come to a downtown because the pipes are great in the ground. I mean, most of us flush a toilet and figure it's going to do what it's supposed to do. And, and that's the case. And we've noted, as Phase 1 and Phase 2, I think the Phase 1 and Phase 2 really is a misnomer. It's, really, it was part of a construction process. It makes sense to do things in two stages because of the construction rationale, but it was all important. And as noted earlier, the part that's really important is the part that's above the ground. And in my working definition, infrastructure is anything that's bolted to the ground. And lots of the proposal, and the idea, the proposals and the ideas that came forward from the charrettes are infrastructure. And when the federal government, provincial government, when at upper-tier levels, and I've worked with them for a number of years, made a decision to support this ISF funding application, they bought into a story. The story wasn't just about pipes, although we all know we've all got aging pipes, and in fact, Niagara's debt's entirely in the ground. They bought into an economic revitalization, economic development story as well. In my opinion, and one of the reasons why I'm so passionate about downtown Niagara Falls, is that if we do this right and become an attractor above ground that can add a couple of hours to an average tour stay here in Niagara Falls, we can have an absolutely profound economic impact on the region of Niagara. There isn't a single hotel in old town, downtown Niagara Falls. But I don't know the working number, 11, 12, 13,000 rooms up the street and around, around the city. We need to keep those people in Niagara Falls, and indeed, in Niagara, just a little bit longer. And I think we can do that if we get above ground right. The ideas we're talking about are not just beautification. It's not just pretty for the sake of pretty. It's part of an economic investment that we're making in this community. And I think to only go a portion of that is making an entire mistake. Everybody knows that success is on the margin. And in this discussion, the funding that you're putting forward, looking whether or not to take from the sewer reserves, or to take it from the ISF funding, do play a pivotal difference in what shows above grade. Now, I recognize that there's some concern around council about prioritization of projects, costing of projects, the big picture, and I get it. I feel a little bit, too. I mean, it was only as of, I think, Friday or Thursday, we found out that there was some funding overrun on the sewer side that might be taken from the ISF funding, and we haven't had a great chance to sit down and really figure out what building blocks really need to be there. So, this evening, and likely in a further motion, you'll be asked to support the arches, hopefully, in my, in my opinion, hopefully, in their complete sense, as well as the music, which I think is a wonderful, important add and part of our partnership commitment to the Winter Festival of Lights. But I have no problem sitting with members of council and revisiting with senior staff the prioritization of the remaining piece of the puzzle. That's important. It's important any year, not just an election year. And we want to get that right, too. Certainly, Historic Niagara is 100% committed to the success of the street, and so are the private merchants up and down that street. And it's very important. So, I'm hoping that council can find a way to leave that door open, to go the whole nine yards at a future point. But I'm not hung up on jamming a decision through tonight that, that might not make sense. I just want to be sure that we all realize the importance, the economic importance of what we're about to do tonight. Thanks for your time. I look forward to working with you as we go.
Thank you. Are there any questions of Mr. Ritchie by members of council? Thank you very much, Mr. Ritchie. Yeah, okay. Counselor, do you have a question?
No, I've been waiting to speak for a while. I guess you just didn't notice my hand being steadily.
That's right, I did.
What I wanted to comment on was, Mr. Todd mentioned the project as presented, and thanks to Counselor Iannone, I have a copy of the actual application here. I've read it through again and again, and I see at the end where Mr. Holman, as director of municipal works, attests that the information is true and complete. There is no mention of the wireless sound system in here. There is no mention of the archway network in here, and there is no mention of a downtown parquet in here. So to try and include those now, I think would be very dishonest.
Counselor Iannone?
And I'm just curious, through you, Mr. Mayor, and Mr. Holman, in our conversations today, you said that the federal and provincial government didn't know we were looking at funding parquets and beautification from this ISF money, because the ISF money is designated for infrastructure. Are we no longer true to the application we put forward to the federal and provincial government? Because I'm thinking that there is other underground infrastructure work that we can do in the downtown core that would use the other $1.4 million that would be true to the intent to the application to the federal and provincial government. Because, again, the spin here is, we're over. We're not over. We still have $1,004,000 in the money we applied for, under the, the application we applied for, true to the words that we applied for. We're trying to sneak in pretty and parks in an application that didn't ask for that type of money. So does the federal, because, and I just wanted to step back one more time. Also provided to me the information today was the application that was denied for funding, and that was on the downtown revitalization and beautification project. And that was all just beautification. That was denied for a reason. It was denied because the ISF is exactly for that, Mr. Mayor. Infrastructure stimulus, not beautification. So I don't think we're not complying to anything. We have used that money that we have wisely. I just hope we say to the BIA, you have to work at needs, not wants. The parquet is not in this application. Your arches are not in this application, and your sound system is not in this application. And through you, Mr. Mayor, and Mr. Holman, if they're not in the application, and we still have infrastructure work we can do downtown, have we really complied to the application to the federal and provincial government? Because to me, this kind of sounds like a bait and switch.
Well, I have a question. First of all, we're hearing things like dishonest, we're hearing things like sneak in, and bait and switch. We have a CIO, we have a staff that's reputable, and Mr. Todd, I'd like you to answer those allegations, if you would, please, because I'm concerned about that.
Can I say something? Can we also talk about, can we also talk about Mr. Green's email to council saying that our staff told him?
At this point, you've made some allegations. I'd like to get to the bottom of that.
That's right.
That, that's a slam against the staff or somebody. So who's being dishonest? Who's sneaking in?
Please, Ted.
Mr. Todd?
Okay, may I, Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Holman.
I think if we look at the funding that we're getting from, through the ISF funding, I think Mr. Harrison can tell you that the money that we've spent now would probably cover off our funding commitment under the program, because we spent that amount. So I think we're good there. I, I think, if we can kind of now look at it in terms of a total pot of money, if we've fulfilled our commitment and have matched the dollars for underground work from the federal and provincial government, the additional work that we're talking right now about for the, the archways or the sound system really would be coming out of some of those other dollars that we have allocated to the project. So I don't think we're in, we're not in violation of the funding agreement, because we have lived up to our commitment to spend, and we probably spent more money on the sewers than originally was outlined. So I think we're, we're okay there in terms of what our commitment is with the federal and provincial government, but, so there's, there's not a concern there. In terms of, and I, I do apologize, because I know Mr. Felicetti is on vacation tonight, but I know that Mr. Felicetti had had conversations with our federal and provincial counterparts that indicated that there would have been enough flexibility to allow some of these components, as long as the major components were complied with. So, again, I believe that it would have been appropriate to have some funding on some of these other issues, as long as we lived up to our component on the, on the underground work. So, Mr. Mayor, I, I believe from a staff point of view, you know, it's not now a question of are we going to be able to gain the total amount of contribution from the federal and provincial government. I think it's clear that we spent enough money, that those monies will be forthcoming to us. It's really, what does council want to do with the rest of the proposed budget, and how do you want to spend it?
And, Mr. Todd, I'd like you to qualify again. Who authorized staff to prepare design work for the street, for the streetscape but work and the parquet? Who authorized that work to be done, and how long ago was that done?
Well, Mr. Mayor, a lot of that work has been developed since March. A lot of it was direction that we were getting from the Downtown Steering Committee. We've had a couple of update reports. I believe the parquet was something fairly new to the process that was shared, I believe, at our May 31st meeting of council. In our update report, we talked about having some charrettes and talking about these concepts. So, it was before council, I believe, in that report on May 31st, and we indicated that we were going to go out and do further investigation with members of the public and at Spring Licious and with the downtown businesses.
Thank you. Mr. Counselor Maves?
Yes, Your Worship, I think we can kick this around all night, but I'm just looking at, is there any way we can put through item 1 and item 3, and defer item 2? Wouldn't that be a more logical thing to do, to expedite things? It looks like they want to have their sound system in the gateway get started. And the other thing is, too, those sewers still have to be paid for, and I think probably, if we get the input on Phase 2, if we defer that, would that expedite things tonight? if we defer that, would that expedite things tonight?
I'm sorry?
That's what you're doing.
Yeah. Mr. Clerk?
You've got a motion on the floor that's related to number one, and comes down to the funding of number one. We're asking you to give us direction on the two tenders, or sorry, the two RFPs. And then you have the option to, you know, defer the rest of the components that are laid out in phase two.
Sure. Yeah. And that's where we're having our dialogue on it, that's the point.
Make that motion.
Well, we have a motion, we have a motion on the floor, but you need the background information in which to make your decision. So, that's why we're, we're trying to get that ascertained. Mr. Clerk, would you read the motion, please, so the members of council understand what I'm saying?
Well, the motion on the floor is that the additional, that the additional costs incurred during phase one downtown infrastructure revitalization program, project be funded from the ISF program. That was moved by Counselor Wang, seconded by Counselor Aiononi.
Are there any questions with regard to that?
Sir?
Pardon? I'm sorry? I didn't hear what you said.
I said not sewer reserve, that is, yes.
Yes, and then we had questions arise from that. Counselor Diodati, others are asking questions. I'm sorry?
Who changed the motion?
No, I understand that. Okay, members of council?
Do you want me to read it again? Basically, the recommendation that's in your report, number one, but instead of sewer reserves, which is staff's recommendation, you put in the ISF program.
Yep. And you have to, Mr. Todd, I'd like to explain what that means.
And I see a few looks. I just want to, I want you to understand what that motion means. If that motion is passed, it will mean that the phase two project will be in the magnitude of $1.4 million. It will not be the 2.2, because you're saying we're not taking the other money out of reserve. So, voting in favor of this motion will mean that phase two will be scaled back to $1.4 million.
And that's the above-ground information that Mr. Ritchie just spoke to us about? That was what he was trying to qualify? And you still wanted to have, this council still wanted to express their interest in pursuing what may be in that, the balance that work to be completed. What they're asking for, what they asked us to proceed with, was the installation of the new sound system and also the archways, which is what the tender was based upon, to be completed by the end of October in time to accommodate the traffic from the Festival of Lights, which is going to be coming in November. And that's how the, the structure of the RFP was made to coincide with the work to be done, and that's why they wanted our approval this evening. Is that correct, Mr. Todd?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. And again, just to make it clear to council, as we move through these, if you vote in favor of the motion on the floor, you're left with $1.4 million. Then as you proceed to the sound system and the archways, approval of those items would be coming out of the $1.4 million. If you defeat the motion on the floor, it would still leave the door open for the full $2.2 million to be spent, I would assume with the subsequent report back to council. But then as you move through the other two, sound system and archways, you would have more flexibility, because your offset limit on the second phase would be 2.2 million, as opposed to 1.4 million.
Okay. So, is that clear to everybody? Okay, so, we're going to call the vote. It's a recorded vote. So, do you want to read the motion last time there, please?
Okay. Motion moved by Counselor Wang, seconded by Counselor Aiononi, that the additional costs incurred during phase one of the downtown infrastructure revitalization project be funded from the ISF program. So, that's the $1.39 million on the chart on page six. Counselor Diodati?
Opposed.
Counselor Fisher?
Four.
Counselor Aiononi?
Four.
Counselor Carrio?
Four.
Counselor Maves?
Both.
Counselor Peter Angelo?
Both.
Counselor Thompson?
Both.
Counselor Wing?
Caved.
Mayor Selsey?
Opposed.
It's defeated.
Okay. Okay, so, we have defeated that motion. Mr. Todd, do you want to qualify then, the reserves?
Okay, Mr. Mayor, just, Mr. Mayor, if I may, just to give us a running total of where we are, defeating that motion would indicate now that there is still $2.2 million available on the table, if you will, for phase two. But I'm hearing the council would like us to come back with a subsequent report, perhaps after some further dialogue, detailing a little bit more on what the priorities are. But the other two items that the BIA would like you to deal with tonight is the sound system, which in here is $60,000, and the archways, which we've identified at $300,000. So, approval on those two items tonight, again, would draw that item, oh, I'm sorry, the memo was slightly higher than that, is slightly higher than $300,000. But that money would come out of the 2.2. And your approval tonight would mean that we would be proceeding to spend those dollars, because the BIA would like those features implemented prior to the Christmas season this fall.
Now, you heard Mr. Ritchie address earlier, members of councils, just to put that in perspective. It's, it's the things you don't see below the ground that we, we have to deal with, that we, we had to look at the increased costs on. But now we're looking at above-ground features, streetscape features, that, and council will have the opportunity, again, if it's a parquet, wherever that concept arose from, or whatever features in terms of streetscape come forward, council will have a chance. I think Counselor Thompson asked for that in the future to be submitted, so that can still come forward. We've had dialogue. Mr. Bollebrook, as I mentioned earlier, Mr. Felicetti have met with, with the Historic Downtown people and others, along with our CAO, and we've had that dialogue. So, you're aware of that. So, that can still come back to us. So, Mr. Clerk, we'll be dealing with the item number three, correct?
Correct, although I think you still have to deal with number one.
Okay.
I mean, you voted against using the ISF fund.
Okay.
Yeah, that to me means that you're in favor of number one, but you still have to make the motion to do that.
Okay. Yes, Counselor Diodati?
If I can just inter, can I say something?
Excuse me. Yes, Mr. Counselor?
Mr. Mayor, the decision on refunding the first phase can be deferred till the end of this, end of the year. Normally, we have a report that we would come back later in the year. We started it last year, if you recall, where we talk about the various construction projects during the year. At that point, we could make a determination on how to fund the, the extra work done on the sewer side. We may have better information then, that we may not be spending the 2.2 on the second phase, and at that point, we could have a better understanding. We also may be able to apply to the region for some of the portion of that other funding. There may be other alternatives. But I would recommend that maybe the first phase be, be held off until later in the year.
Okay. Counselor Diodati, do you want to make any comments further to that?
I'm just trying to understand what you're saying. Hold off on phase one? Can you just explain what you mean by that?
Okay, the total project is worth $3.9 million. You've spent $2.5 million so far. You, the proposal today for the two RFPs, I'm not sure, I haven't seen the numbers, is probably in the $400,000, $500,000 range. You have approval for $3.9 million. You haven't overspent anything as of now, even if you go proceed with the, the first two.
Would you repeat that again? We haven't overspent?
You haven't overspent with anything as of yet. However, however, we can come back at the end of the year in our year-end capital, capital program, right, report. And at that point, you can make a decision on how you want to fund that reserve, whether it be with sewer reserves, whether it be a reduction in phase two going into next year.
Thank you. Counselor, does that answer your question? Okay. Okay, so, we, the clerk would like us to deal with the remnants of this report, the members of council, the pleasure of council here. We can, we can defer item number one until the end of the year. We can deal with item number three now. And we, actually, item number two, if you look at that, we could actually recommend that they come back to council with regard to the proposed completion of the final items in phase two.
Okay. I would move his suggestion, and also the two items regarding the, the proposals for the sound system and the arches.
And which?
Sound system and the arches.
Okay. But then you also wanted to talk about the next phase, upcoming phases, the implementation of that work. You want council to review that. So, that was, that came up, so you might want to make, okay? So, we're talking about number one being deferred. Number two, the council approved the proposed implementation subject to further discussion, right? Fair to say. And number three, that staff authorized to proceed with the award of requests for proposals on the new sound system and the gateway arches.
I'm all set with that.
Okay, moved by Counselor Thompson. Okay, moved by Counselor Thompson, seconded by Counselor Fisher, right? And they went from split, so that's fine.
One and the two and three separate.
One being the deferral?
Yes.
Okay. So, we'll deal with item number one being the deferral till a later date, as Mr. Harrison suggested. We'll deal with that first. Are there any comments or questions with regard to that motion? Having seen none, you're ready for the vote. All those in favor? Motion's carried. The second item being, second and third items being the second part of the motion, it's split. We're prepared for that. Any further questions or comments?
That money, those two.
Yes, and, and?
And they have reported, please.
Okay. Two and three, this, this is the second part of that motion. No, it's, it's number two and three are taken as the second motion.
This is the sound system and the archways.
The sound system and archways, and also report back to the council, okay? So, any like a recorded vote? Okay? Any further questions?
Yeah, so, so?
Yes.
We're voting on the second part, a recommendation of two and three. So, so three being the two RFPs we're going to approve.
And number two, number, the item number two here?
Yeah.
Which we qualified?
Yeah.
With Counselor Thompson and Counselor Fisher's motion to say that for the future work, council will be engaged in that after the BIA makes a determination to approve what work is going to get done.
Okay.
Okay, so that's, those two items being that work on number two, and the, the, being the archway and the, the sound system are in this motion, and that's going to be recorded. Right? Everybody's understood? Okay, Counselor Carrio?
Quick question. Then on number two, that we don't do anything to exceed the budget that's in existence today until we talk about number one.
Well, we'll have a chance to look at that work, the balance of what's being done. And we'll have Mr. Harrison report back to us when he finds that there's more money available from the region or other sources. Counselor Peter Angelo, any question?
Isn't number two to approve the proposed implementation plan for phase two? That's what number two is, right?
No, yeah, that's subject to council's input. We qualify that. That motion was made by Counselor Thompson and Counselor Fisher. It's different from what's recorded. Mr. Todd?
If, if, Counselor, and through the conversation, I was to understand that on item number two, that proposed phase two, that we'd go back and get further input on prior, prioritizing those items from the BIA, and then we'd report back to council with another report.
And that's what Counselor Thompson asked for initially.
And in all fairness, even being on the steering committee, I'm unfamiliar with some of the things that are being, I want to know what's going on.
Yeah. Okay, that's what you mentioned earlier. Okay, so, is it clear?
Mm-hmm.
Mr. Clerk?
So, what's the recorded vote on the tender?
On the two items?
On the two RFPs.
No, on the, on the two, on the two RFPs and the second, the item?
She asked that they be split.
You want to split those again?
Yeah, because I am opposed to spending the money on the archways and the, but I'm not opposed to council being called in how we spend them. That's what I said to you, split one, two, and three.
Well, you actually, we split number one, and we split two and three together. Okay? All right, so now you'd like a recorded vote on which item? Two or three?
I don't need to record one or two, just three.
Okay, item number two, Counselor's original, Counselor Thompson's original comment with regard to having further input on the additional work to be done. You prepared to deal with that now? Okay? All those in favor, please raise your hands.
I want a recorded vote.
Please raise your hands. That's unanimous. Thank you. Item number three, you'd like a recorded vote on the sound system and the archway, arches, right? And now, Mr. Clerk.
Not to confuse everybody, but are you going for the listed prices that are in the memo?
Under the arch?
Because under the report, you've got $60,000 allocated for the sound system. The RFP came in at 57 and change, pretty well close. But for the archways, you've got $300,000 allocated in the report, and the pricing came in at 363. So, you're, so the motion's based on those dollar figures that we got out of the RFPs.
And we're being asked to approve the RFPs. Okay? We're being asked to approve the RFPs.
Okay, Counselor Diodati?
Four.
Counselor Fisher?
Four.
Counselor Aiononi?
Both.
Counselor Carrio?
Four.
Counselor Maves?
Four.
Counselor Peter Angelo?
Four.
Counselor Thompson?
Four.
Counselor Wing?
Both.
Mayor Selsey?
Four.
It passes.
Okay, so we got through that. Move on to additional items, then we can, reports, ratification in camera recommendations. Mr. Clerk?
One item, Your Worship, the council sent a letter of support for the rink at the brink to the Niagara Parks Commission.
Okay, ratification in camera, moved by Counselor Peter Angelo, seconded by Counselor Diodati. Any questions or comments? Having seen none, all those in favor. Motion's carried. Thank you. And move on to the consent agenda. Are there any additional items? No, I guess the consent is here. Pleasure of council, move the entire agenda, moved by Counselor Carrio, seconded by Counselor Thompson. Any further comments or questions? Having seen none, all those in favor. Motion's carried. Thank you.
We have a resolution.
We have a resolution, therefore be resolved that the council, the corporation of the city of Niagara Falls hereby request the regional municipality of Niagara to issue debentures in accordance with the terms and amounts set out below, and further that the city confirms it is entered into a contract for or authorized the commencement of all works here enlisted. Mr. Clerk?
Yeah, just the resolution that's actually in your agenda refers to 40 years. Obviously, based on your decision earlier this evening, that'll be amended to reflect 30 years.
So, noted 30 years. So, moved by Counselor Fisher, seconded by Counselor Peter Angelo. Any discussion or comment? Having seen none, all those in favor. Motion's amended the bylaws for council's consideration.
I know, Your Worship.
And can I have a motion to introduce the bylaws? Bylaw, if you give them a first reading, moved by Counselor Peter Angelo, seconded by Counselor Diodati. Once again, council's heard the motion. Any further comments or questions? Having seen none, all those in favor. Motion's carried. Thank you.
Bylaws 2010-129 to 2010-141, read a first time.
Can I have a motion to give the bylaws a second and third reading? Moved by Counselor Thompson, seconded by Counselor Maves. Once again, council's heard the motion. Any further questions or comments? Having seen none, all those in favor. Motion's approved. Thank you.
Bylaws 2010-129 to 2010-141, read a second and third time, and passed.
Thank you. Any new business this evening? Counselor Thompson, Counselor Fisher, Counselor Peter Angelo.
Yes, I was contacted by a member of a family in the city, the family of John Shubler, former chief of the Niagara region. And I have an interesting story to tell about John Shubler. I was brought up most of my life on Sixth Avenue, and about 150 feet away from my place was his family home at the corner. He was a few years older than I was, but I watched his progress over the years, and how he progressed through the regional Niagara Police Department ranks as an officer initially, up to the chief's office as an advisor, and finally as the regional police chief, which I found was extremely outstanding, particularly for a local individual in the city of Niagara Falls to accomplish that. He was not only a good chief and administrator at the regional police, but he was unique by the fact that he was actively involved in so many different aspects of our community, in many, many committees that he, he put his time and effort in, aside from what he was doing in the police department, to make this a better community and a better place in which to live. And I was contacted by the family to see if it would be possible to have John, Chief John Shubler's name recognized sometime in the future with a, a street name. I also contacted a developer to see if that was possible. They are looking into that. But I thought it was appropriate when I was contacted because of his, not only concentrating on his work and efforts in the police department and the excellent work that he did, but how he worked in our community for the betterment of everyone, and his early passing, which was extremely tragic to anybody who really knew him. So, I would like to make a motion that it be added to the appropriate list to suitably recognize John Shubler as an outstanding citizen to this community.
And Counselor, I appreciate you doing it. And we're told that the developers have a chance to select, and it was one of the names, so if you want to just reinforce it, that's great.
Yeah, let's do it formally. That's great. Thank you.
Moved by Counselor Thompson, seconded by Counselor Fisher. You've heard the motion. Again, all in favor? Motion's carried. Thank you. Counselor Fisher?
Thank you. We have the pleasure in Chippewa of entertaining a lady who we really are going to treasure. She's going to be 100 years old this year, this week, I should say. She comes from a family of long history. Her husband was a counselor in the village of Chippewa. Her family, her sons, her husband, were very involved in sport. Her family, her sons, her husband, were very involved in sports, and they, she was like the mother of everyone, Dot Ives. And she will be 100 years old this week, on Thursday. So I would like to make a motion, and I've asked Wayne to second it for me, that her name or the Ives' name be put on a future street in Chippewa, or if they rename a street. Now, we can't rename a street now because that's too involved, but we would like the Ives' family name put on a future street in the village of Chippewa.
Moved by Counselor Fisher, seconded by Counselor Thompson. Once again, we do submit these, and it's up to the developer to make that final decision, as you know, members of council, but certainly we can put them on the list and they'll be able to choose from that, so it'd be our pleasure to do that. So all those in favor, please raise your hand. Thank you, motion's carried, thank you. Counselor Peter Angelo?
Thanks, Your Worship, and I'm not sure if many people had a chance to read in the paper the other day, but there was a local man, actually, he lives in Toronto now, but he's from Niagara Falls originally, was born here, grew up here, and he ended up going on and winning an Emmy for his production of The Wizards of Waverly. And, Your Worship, I know that the Arts and Culture Awards are coming up and they're going to be placing people on the wall. I'm not suggesting that he go on the wall, but I'm suggesting that it would be appropriate that we recognize him from this council and perhaps invite him here. I know his family still lives here, so he probably comes here often to see them anyway. And I know he's been a longtime friend of Mr. Arifida's as well, so I'm sure Mr. Arifida will love to write the letter. I would make that a motion, Your Worship.
Okay, moved by Counselor Peter Angelo, seconded by Counselor Diodati. Once again, council's heard the motion, all in favor? Motion's carried, thank you. Counselor Diodati?
Yes, Your Worship, I had an issue come to my attention not too long ago when I went and investigated. It's a Chippewa issue, so I should discuss it with the people in Chippewa. But the issue is the culvert on Dock Street, Your Worship. And, you know, for quite some time, I serviced the IGA out there, when I was an IGA, and I witnessed myself residents stepping out of the car parked on Dock Street on the stone culvert and fall into the, into the culvert. And I wanted to talk to all the businesses in that area, and I had it reconfirmed that that absolutely has and is a challenge and an issue. Well, I found out, there wasn't a lot we could do at that time. I found out most recently that the hydro services were removed, the poles were removed, and that now we have an opportunity potentially to backfill the culvert and possibly pave it over. And that would do two things, Your Worship. Number one, that would eliminate the danger of people stepping out of the passenger side of the car and falling down the steep grade, which is a stone shoulder, and especially in the wintertime. The second thing that would do, Your Worship, is it would make the possibility of vertical parking instead of horizontal, so we'd create a bunch more parking spots. So I don't need to tell you, the businesses down there were excited at the idea that that could possibly happen. Now, I did talk to our head of engineering, and he did tell me, our municipal works did tell me that there, it is, it does form part of a drainage situation, but I also did some further investigation, found out there's a lot of ways around that, or ways that we could mitigate that. He had also suggested some other creative ideas about possibly closing the road allowance and selling it to the owners there, making it into one big accessible parking lot, and there were some real neat creative ideas. But I thought it starts with us, I think, Your Worship, and I think that it would serve the Chippewa residents well, especially the businesses in that area, if we could have staff come back with some options for us to fix that area, and then I thought, you know, we could name it Fisher Lane or something like that, I'm not sure. But anyway, Your Worship, I would make a motion that, tongue in cheek, but I would make a motion, Your Worship, that staff come back with a report on some options on dealing with the culvert now that the hydro services have been removed.
Yeah, but you can just, if I can just explain some of that, if I may, that, that subject did come up a couple of years ago, Mr. Larry Van, or Vaughn, I should say, and I, and a representative from Canadian Agriball, we were trying to get them involved with us to maybe pay for some of that, and they didn't have any money in their budget to do that at that time. He did remove that line, it came across the creek, and I'm not sure if it's part of a right of way, and our former director of public works met with us out there, and we tried to see about getting it enclosed. And at that time, nothing happened, nothing transpired, so maybe we can try again. This motion, we'll see if, again, if what, there may be some background information on file here, but we did have representatives of Canadian Agriball who we thought might want to beautify the area and help us with that, and in lieu of the fact that they were removing that line and improving that whole area. So we can follow through, but I just wanted to have that information, so.
I appreciate that, Your Worship, and I did talk to Mr. Vaughn as well, and I found out, and I guess it wasn't in their best interest to beautify our area, their thoughts were they took out the poles and they were done. And I think it's kind of, we got to show a little bit of leadership down there, Your Worship, and bring it forward.